I call the November 19th, 2019 regular meeting of the Yakima City Council to order. Councilmember Mendez will be participating via speakerphone since she is unable to be here in person tonight. Councilmember Mendez, are you able to hear me? Well, I think we need to have a moment. Councilmember Mendez? Wonder if Mr. Beeler would like to join us? Councilmember Mendez?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. And you do have access to all the materials for tonight's meeting?
I do.
With that, we'll proceed with the meeting. Roll call, please.
Coffee?
Here.
Cousins?
Here.
Gutierrez is absent. Funk?
Here.
Hill is on his way. Mendez?
Present.
White?
Here.
Thank you. With that, would you please stand and join us with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
George, good evening.
Good evening. Jorge language connection. In case if somebody needs an interpreter, I have the radios available behind. Si alguien necesita del ayudo en intérprete, tengo los radios aquí en la puerta. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. The open discussion for the good of the order, we do have a... We do have a problem here.
Hey, Randy. For some reason, the call just keeps hanging up.
Call keeps what?
It keeps dropping.
Okay. Well, just keep turning, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. We have a Small Business Saturday proclamation, and I believe Berlin Best was going to be here to accept this. If not, we will go ahead.
No Berlin?
No. Councilmember Cousins will be reading the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Yakima celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States. And whereas, 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community. And whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that have... that they have not yet been before, or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas, 90%, 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas, 59% of small business owners and small business owner Saturday contributions significantly... business contributions significantly to their holiday sales for each year. And whereas, the city of Yakima supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Holly Cousins, on behalf of Mayor Coffee and the rest of the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the rest of the year, dated this 19th day of November, 2019.
And I'm sorry that Berlin is not here, but I'm sure we all join in in saying that that is an exciting day, and it's a fun day, and if you have an opportunity to get out and about, do so. With that, I'd also now like to read a proclamation, and Eric Silver's will be accepting as president of Downtown Yakima Rotary. If I may. Whereas, the First Rotary Club started the vision of one man, Paul Harris, with the formation of the first Rotary Club in Chicago, Illinois, on February 23rd, 1905, so that professionals with diverse backgrounds could exchange ideas and form meaningful lifelong friendships. And whereas, Rotary International endures today through an international organization on six continents with over 1.2 million Rotarians worldwide and 35,000-plus clubs. And whereas, the Yakima Rotary was chartered in December 1, 1919, sponsored by club number four, the Seattle Rotary Club, starting with 25 members and has grown to over 354 active and honorary members today, with a shared vision as a diverse leadership group of men and women committed to improving the lives of those who live in the Yakima Valley and the world community through service above self. And whereas, the Yakima Rotary Club's first community service project was to have proper street signs put up so people could not get lost in the city of Yakima. And on an annual basis, continues through supportive projects and programs that meet the needs of children's health, literacy, hunger, quality of life improvements to our parks and public spaces. And whereas, on an annual basis, the Yakima Rotary Club awards $87,000 in vocational and academic scholarships to area students to fulfill their higher education goals. And whereas, service extends on a global level to partner with other Rotary Clubs throughout the world to eradicate polio. And whereas, on December 1, 2019, the Yakima Rotary Club celebrates 100 years of service above self, marking this monumental occasion with the opening of the YMCA Yakima Rotary Aquatics Center, contributed by local Rotary Clubs and their members, and a new playground and picnic shelter at Martin Luther King Junior Park. And now therefore, I, Kathy Coffee, Mayor of the City of Yakima, and on behalf of the Yakima City Council, do hereby proclaim that we celebrate the Yakima Rotary Club and the accomplishments and contributions it has made to improve the lives of the Yakima community members and the world by proclaiming December as the celebration of Yakima Rotary and service above self, and encourage all citizens of Yakima to learn more and participate in great community service clubs like Rotary in the Yakima area, dated this 19th day of November, 2019. Kathy Coffee, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate you guys taking the time to be able to do this proclamation. I would like to have all of our Rotarians, if you would please stand. And if you stay standing, please.
All right. Are we gonna stand?
Yes, we do.
I guess we'll stand with you.
All right. You know, we continue to do projects throughout our community, as well as around the world. You know, we're a big club in a small town doing great big things, not only in Yakima, but across the whole world. We have a great big heart. And we would also like you to join us in a celebration.
Financial Services Manager, Kimberly... Don't dominate.
On December 6th, we're gonna have the greatest party ever, and we hope that you will be there,
We'll make the introduction. Kimberly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
because it's our opportunity to be able to let Yakima know how much we really appreciate Yakima of all the projects that we've done, and we have not finished yet.
Can you hear me okay?
Not really.
Right towards me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better.
All right.
We... better.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Could we have quiet in the chambers, please? Thank you. Thank you. Eric?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
We want to shake our hand. We want to congratulate you.
It is my pleasure tonight to recognize Royale Snyder for 20 years of dedicated service.
It's been a good year so far.
In her 20 years, she has worked in four departments and held eight different positions. She started October 1st in 1999 in the Utilities Department as an Department Assistant Two. Six months later, she was transferred over to our Codes Department and was promoted to a Department Assistant Three. In the 13 years that she was in the Codes Department, she wore many hats and was promoted several times, from Department Assistant Three to Permit Tech, to Code Compliance Officer, Plans Examiner One, and an Office Supervisor. After Codes, she became an Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief. Then finally, in May of 2018, she became our Payroll Administrator, and we really appreciate her. She has quite a job. Royale has seen many changes in her 20 years here. Changes in city managers, changes in city council, division managers, department managers, and the transition from paper accounting to electronic accounting. Her intrinsic knowledge in the city and the departments is invaluable, and the 20 years of working for the city states a fact that the city is a great place to work. It really is. What I appreciate most about Royale is her commitment and follow-through each and every month in making sure that the payroll process finishes on time. She's a team player, and she's not afraid of change. So Royale, it is my pleasure to present you with this certificate for 20 years of dedication, and thank you.
Holy cow. 20 years is a long time. Really excited that I had such a benchmark. It's great. I have so much more to potentially do, so I'm excited that I've got this much under my belt, and we'll see where this goes from here. Thanks, you guys.
Royale, will you come down and shake our hands so that we can thank you personally?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks so much. Good job. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That was nice.
Next, we have John Smith, Executive Director of the Yakima County Development Association, with a brief presentation. Thank you.
Brief presentation? I was told 30 minutes.
Yeah, well, they lie.
So, just really quick, want to give an update. We've been quite busy this year. The first thing that I want to announce, though, is that we are having a Small Business Pop-Up Event, December 3rd, and it's gonna be available both English and Spanish. So we're working with a translator who's gonna be able to provide service very similar to what you have here. And also, when we kick off the 10th Annual Enterprise Challenge Business Plan Competition, that's gonna be translated as well into Spanish. So those services are gonna be available pretty much in almost everything that we do going forward. So that's something that we've been working on and are happy that we finally got into motion. So some of the projects that we've been involved in most recently include the YMCA, and then there's several projects that are not at a point that I can discuss them in great detail publicly, but there's three, four food processing companies located in Yakima that we're working with on expansions at various stages. Some of them have submitted SEPOS already, some of them have not, but we've been helping them identify tax incentives that apply for food processing. We've been helping them with site selection. We've been helping them also connect with workforce development programs that are available in the community, and we're looking at, you know, between all of those, close to, I would say, $40 million or more in new investment.
Yes.
And also new jobs that will come along with that as well. Something that's super exciting that I wasn't aware of until earlier this year is that the Yakima Airport is being considered as a location to become an electrified airport with the Washington State Department of Transportation, and the purpose of that is in the future of aircraft is that they will be electric, just like a Prius or one of those new BMW electric cars. And so the need, though, is that an airport has to have electrical infrastructure that can quickly charge the batteries that these airplanes run on, or have the storage capacity to have batteries that can just be switched in and out. And so the Yakima Airport is on that shortlist. Rob Peterson and I have had conversations about this. He's working with the Department of Transportation, and I attended a symposium on drones down in Pendleton where they have a flight center. And as I was there, there was a lot of talk about, and this is happening, but there's... they're already made, and they're already flying these, where you would just go out and get into this big drone. It looks like a little, you know, one of those little smart cars, but with propellers, and it will fly you to where you want to go. It's an urban mobility transportation solution. The Federal Department of Transportation is working on it. Washington State is working on it, and Yakima is being considered as a location that, you know, to electrify, and this testing can occur. So we're working very closely with Rob on that. Some of the other projects that have been going on, there's a couple of service businesses, some professional businesses that are in the community that are expanding and growing as well. And we are also kicking off, hopefully in 2020. We're working on it right now, bringing some one-to-two-day maintenance training classes to the area. So we've heard from local employers that, you know, when they need a one-day... someone to go to skip one-day training to get updated on something, they would send them to Portland or to Seattle or Spokane, and so we're trying to bring that to Yakima, and we'll work in partnership with those businesses and also the training institutions that we have here, if possible, to provide that kind of training for our local workforce.
Can I ask, or just make a comment? I don't know if you're aware, but YVC is offering a drone program now, so that might be an area in which you can...
For sure. That's great.
Not that... I don't think it's that kind of drones, but still a drone program.
Not the kind that's gonna fly people around?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. So with that, unless there's any questions, that's just a quick update of what we've been working on. Enterprise Challenge is kicking off again. We've mentioned the Small Business. That program's launched over 180 small businesses, many of them right here in Yakima, so we're hoping to have another great crowd of entrepreneurs come in this year that will be able to help get started.
Thank you, John. We appreciate everything you do. It's been a pleasure working with you over the years, and thank you for the update.
Thank you. You too. And I did want to hand out... I didn't hand it out ahead of time.
Please. Come on down.
Updated relocation guide.
Come on down, shake our hands, and we'll take that. And thank you. Next is an appointment to the Charter of Civil Service Commission. Greg Lightly... Excuse me. Greg Lighty. May I have a motion to confirm?
Second.
We have a motion to confirm and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Item 5, a summary of the Downtown Plan Implementation Committee Meeting, which Councilmember Brad Hill and I will attend. Well, we both attend.
We attended.
We attended. Do you want to give any update?
I think what... it'd be premature, you know, I don't want to get out in front of our skis yet, but we had a meeting with members of the Original Steering Committee. For those of you that don't know, the Downtown Master Plan is about 70 pages long, and although Parking Lot 2 and the intent for that was kind of weaved through the document, there's really only about two pages that are specific to that. So our thought as councilmembers is, you know, do we jettison the whole plan, or do we go back and see what's still achievable and desirable with the business community and policymakers? So we had a meeting, and that went well. I think where I'd leave it is there's definitely goodwill and intent to move forward with improving downtown, and what that means, I think we're yet to discover, but we'll be having a follow-up meeting. I talked with Andrew Holt the other day. I'm hoping a facilitator that's not a councilperson emerges. I think that this should be driven somewhat by community and business, and we want to make sure that any missteps that happened over the last few years with downtown development are avoided, and that we're really vigilant about that, calling in all sides of proponents and opponents of any issue that comes forward, and make sure that we hear that out and search for compromise without compromising the quality of the plan and any potential developments or infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that we had a great turnout.
We really did, yeah.
And appreciated that, and are continuing to plan additional meetings. So with that, I think that unless there are any questions, council?
I see Joan in the back. You have anything, Joan? You sure you don't want to come up here? Okay.
All right. That concludes it. Next on the agenda is Item 6, the Consent Agenda. I understand there is an error on Item 6F.
Sorry. That's an action from the previous meeting.
All right. I thought so, and...
Is she there?
Can you tell if she... Carmen, are you there?
I'm here.
All right. Thank you.
Yay.
Let me begin again. The Consent Agenda, it is to be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request an item be removed from or added to the consent agenda. If approved by the council, any items removed from the consent agenda will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Are there any requests? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to add Item 9 to the agenda.
Councilmember Mendez would like to add Item number nine.
I second that.
All right. Thank you. If there's no objections, if you will read the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Item 6 says approval of the minutes from the November 5th, 2019, City Council regular meeting and November 12th, 2019, City Council study session. Item B is approved payment of disbursements for the period of October 1st through 31st, 2019. Item C is October 2019 investment transaction reports. Item D is a resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with the Yakima Police Corrections Sergeants, Teamsters Local 760 for January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2023. Item E is a resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 760, representing the Yakima Supervisors and Administrative Unit for January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2023. Item F is a resolution adopting Yakima Transit's Transit Development Plan for 2019 through 2024 and annual report for 2018. Item G is a resolution authorizing a revised agreement with Yakima Valley Conference of Governments for sharing transit planning information. Item H is a resolution authorizing an agreement to fund commuter bus service between Yakima and Ellensburg and to fund paratransit service dial-a-ride. Item I is a resolution ratifying the city manager's execution of change order number one of City Contract 2016-238 for the completion of the citywide LED street light upgrade project. Item J is a resolution authorizing mutual aid agreement between the Department of the Army and the city of Yakima. Item K is a resolution authorizing the city manager to set the 2020 rates and charges for services, facilities, and uses available at the Yakima Air Terminal McAllister Field. Item L is a resolution authorizing increases to previously approved specific cost recoveries for fire department services provided as event management personnel costs during special events. Item M is an ordinance relating to parking, increasing the penalty schedule for parking infractions in amending section 9.60.030 of the City of Yakima Municipal Code. Item N is an ordinance relating to public safety amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code for the purpose of updating the fee schedule for certain fire services. Item O is an ordinance amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code, section 5.0106, entitled "Business License: Denial, Revocation, or Refusal to Renew Grounds Appeals." Item 9 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Yakima Rotary of Yakima for the development, maintenance, and use of Martin Luther King Junior Park.
Do you want to approve consent agenda?
Second.
You have a motion to approve the consent agenda at a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for community members to comment on items not on the agenda for tonight's business meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment, you must fill out a slip on the table outside the council chamber doors, indicate which agenda item you wish to speak to, and hand it to the city clerk. Comments, remarks are limited to three minutes per person. The council will listen to comments made during public comment, but will not respond directly to concerns or questions during tonight's meeting. City staff may be directed to research an issue and make a report to the council at a later date. The first is Brianna Wilcox. Then we have Tony Corsi. Brianna, come on for it.
Where should I stand?
If you'd like to go to the podium, repeat your name and state your city of residence.
Hello, my name is Brianna Wilcox. I am from Yakima. All right. I just moved here in October from Riverside, California, so hello. It's my first meeting. Good to see you. And I've spent the last couple of weeks exploring your city. It's beautiful. I love the greenways. I love meeting people. I've been to the different grocery stores because I have very particular food needs. It's been wonderful. But I am also seeing some kind of scary parallels to the city I just moved from. For example, both cities are rated worst in air pollution and deaths caused by air pollution. They also seem to have very visible homeless population, but not really many services being given. I'm also seeing a huge disparity between West and East Side, which I didn't know was a thing when I was, like, looking for places to live, and also a color divide and a class income divide based on the geography of the city, which I'm not particularly used to. So I'm just kind of curious. Back in Riverside, I was a public school science teacher. Before that, I was a student at Princeton University, class of 13, where I studied psychology and double-minored in neuroscience and education. I also got my biology credential from Princeton. And I've always been interested in how people think and kind of finding ways of how to help people think better and live healthier and happier mental lives. So I'm kind of here with a question, because my city struggles with these issues. Their representatives would work with the citizens. How can we help them? We are here to serve, and I understand there are similar struggles here. But what I'm really curious about is that there are representatives who have actively undermined requests to address climate issues, to address economic injustices between these divides, West and East, that are maybe even trying to, like, undermine the vote for citizens based on income, language, or skin color, which I'm kind of confused about as well. And I'm sure we'll hear about this in further comments today. So my question... Thank you so much... Oh, besides that, thank you so much for those of you who are supporting environmental justice, who are supporting people being able to have access to the democratic process, who are supporting these inequities from these citizens. But my question to those people... Actually, I'm just curious. There are also representatives who actively undermine this and counter this, and my question to them is this: Why are you sitting in these chairs? Why are you being paid by the citizens of Yakima if you're making decisions that actually undermine their ability to have a safe and high-quality life? That's it.
Thank you. Tony Corsi is next, and after that is Jerry Millen.
Here's a real good question. That young lady that just moved over here. How long does she have to wait to get a response? Till she's 55 years old? That's pretty sad. Map bear banks. Human resource. Statements of sitting on the lake, coming up with the program, smoking a cigar, why somebody was doing wrong on this coffee. I went to a meeting yesterday, first one. If you guys don't know, I had a brother, had mental problems because somebody spiked a drink, fried his brain. So comprehensive mental health... undermined requests to address climate issues, to address economic injustices between these divides, West and East, that are maybe even trying to like undermine the vote for citizens based on income, language, or skin color, which I'm kind of confused about as well. And I'm sure we'll hear about this in further comments today. So my question, thank you so much, oh, besides that, thank you so much for those of you who are supporting environmental justice, who are supporting people being able to have access to the democratic process, who are supporting these inequities from these citizens. But my question to those people, actually, I'm just curious, there are also representatives who actively undermine this and counter this, and my question to them is this: Why are you sitting in these chairs? Why are you being paid by the citizens of Yakima if you're making decisions that actually undermine their ability to have a safe and high-quality life?
Thank you. Tony Corsi is next, and after that is Jerry Millen.
Here's a real good question, that young lady that just moved over here. How long does she have to wait to get a response? Till she's 55 years old? That's pretty sad. Map bear banks. Human resource. Statements of sitting on the lake, coming up with the program, smoking a cigar, why somebody was doing wrong on Miss Coffee. I went to a meeting yesterday, first one. If you guys don't know, I had a brother had mental problems because somebody spiked a drink, fried his brain. So comprehensive mental health, the family knows pretty well. Some city representatives were supposed to be there, didn't show up, but I did. Tony's not happy still. I'm not picking on you, Ms. Funk, but I heard, and you know, we talked about statements you made about Tony. Ms. Coffee. Ms. Coffee made you my representative one evening, which you are not. But you decided to tell me when I filled out the forms right for wrong and stopped me from speaking, which was wrong. You, I, and God knows the truth. Yakima is our right city. But when you change a person's life and their history, it's not right. We know about that, don't we, Jack? I don't play games. Life's too important. You think I've been here for 20 years coming to these meetings? For laughs and jokes? For cupcake capers? You're going to figure it out in life. I won't ask too many questions if I don't get the response.
Jerry Millen. After Jerry is James Parks. And then Bill Dour.
Good evening, councilmen.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Millen. I've been a resident of Yakima for a long time. This evening, I'd like to address you about something that doesn't require a decision, just something that I would like you to think about. In 1961, when Dwight David Eisenhower stepped down from his presidency, he gave a farewell speech. In that farewell speech, he coined the term military-industrial complex. And he cautioned the American public that this is going to sweep this nation and cost billions of dollars. What we have done is we've created a new term, the homeless industrial complex, with the same result and the same word of caution and the same warning. Our spending on new, on homelessness has gotten completely out of control. This is not only addressing Yakima, but nationwide. Three specific examples here in Yakima. We approved a housing project on 50th, the bicycle apartments, at a cost of $217,000 per unit. We approved a project on South 16th Avenue for the veterans at a cost of $272,000 per unit. We recently built and completed through Neighborhood Health a project in the old Roy's Market on South Sixth Street at a cost of $333,000 per bid. These costs can't go on. This is a nationwide problem. It is sweeping this country. I've come in contact with a group in California that is also fighting this. They are fighting a project that has been proposed on the budget right now that will cost $1.1 million per unit. It's not unique to us, and we better get it under control. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good to hear it.
Mr. James Parks.
I don't envy you people. I really don't. My name is James Parks, and I've been resident of Yakima over 30 years. I want to revisit the revitalization project for the Henry Beauchamp Community Center. Since I got, we got no response from my last letter, none whatsoever, Councilman White. And we still welcome you to come down to the center and see all the great things that we're doing. In fact, we implore you to. We want to revisit that project because now we have three vital issues at that center. Parking lot is deteriorating. Fire panel is gone. If we get it within the next year, we could probably save tens of thousands of dollars if we get a new fire panel. The kitchen floor is deteriorating, and it's becoming a hazard. A hazard. So I know that you good people are going to do good things, and I really applaud you for doing what you've been doing and stuff. But can you, and, oh, one other thing. We still have a hole in the wall that some idiot ran into in the back of the building and stuff that's about 15 feet wide and two feet deep that I mentioned before. And I think your, your staff is already aware of that. There's a lot of traffic coming through that center, a lot of people coming from all over the state that come to that center. Why, why are these people, why, why do they even bother? Why don't they just come up, go to some hotel? Well, that center is a nice and cozy place, and people like it. They like being right in the heart of the community. It complements what you people think that you're trying to do. So please, let's get some effort and stuff. We don't, we don't even know for, for planning purposes, we don't even know if we can plan for the next year to have people to come from all over the states to come to this center. We got people working hard in that center that's trying to keep it looking good. It's 50 years old, and it's doing what it was intended to do. Mr. Beauchamp and other concerned citizens had a vision when they built that center, and it's working. That vision is working.
Thanks, Mr. Parks.
And I thank you for your time.
Next would be Bill Dour. And Bill, if you'd address the council from the podium, repeat your name and the city of residence, please.
Thank you. My name is Bill, my name is Bill Dour. I live in Yakima. It's been a while since I've been here. And I'd like to say, try and save some time, but my concern has always been the city charter. And as you know, many years, well, a few years ago, 10 years ago or so, that I was on the committee to revise the charter in 2011. At that time, we said that the charter was written in 1986, and that charter was outdated, and it was, we redid it in 2011, and then the ACLU and the courts changed it again in 2016. All this time, the charter has basically said, all three charters had a very similar and really no change in the residency clause for city council positions and for vacating the position if you move out of that residence. Recently, I've been involved, and I just noticed a little while ago that Ms. Halleck is in the audience. I have no animosity against her, but the city charter has always been that you lived and physically lived in the district that you were in. And that was always understood. I had taken the situation that happened in District Five at this previous election. I've gone to the city attorney, Jeff Cutter. We talked about it. There wasn't much he could do. I took it to the prosecuting attorney. There wasn't much he could do. And then we had a hearing at the county auditor's office, and it was basically too, too late to really do much of anything. My reason for being here is that you're going to be looking at another charter change depending upon what goes on with the Strong Mayor. If we're going to get into that, I believe you could save some money. There are three sections in the current charter, the 2016 charter, that basically talks about Article Two, Section One. Each council member must reside in his or her district, and only residents of a given district may vote for the council member position in that district. And also in Section F of that, Paragraph F of that section, it talks about a primary election. Each qualified voter of each district may cast only one vote for a candidate. Each qualified voter. And G, it talks about council member elected and appointed to a district position that members place of residence outside of the district boundary from which that member was nominated or appointed, then the council member shall forfeit the office of council. I have no proof of it, but I was told that at some point in time, a council member had moved from the district, and it wasn't checked. So with all of this, I'm asking that the council look at this in the new charter, get a definition put into the charter.
Your time's up.
And one other thing for residency, and one other thing is to...
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We've got a lot...
You've got a lot to do today, so...
Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to Yakima.
Next, Liz Halleck, I have a question for you. You wrote down number six. I presume you mean number seven.
Are we on the comment right now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, there were no forms last night.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Coffee.
For the record, Elizabeth Halleck.
I'm very excited to get my paper tomorrow morning. I'm very proud of you, Dulce. I will say, when you go to law school, you won't learn anything in law school. You'll get it all, all on the job training. And I do live in my house, and we've known since March that the opposition was watching us. My kids and I go in, turn the lights off, and it is actually a crime in the state of Washington to go by a person's house multiple times a day without a PI license, but I'm just going to let that go. Think that drama is done with. What I wanted to talk about quickly was public disclosure laws. So actually, state law on general prohibition on the use of public facilities to support a ballot initiative. State law RCW 4217A 555 prohibits the use of facilities of a public office to support or oppose a ballot measure or an election campaign for a public office. This is not new. This is not a legal conspiracy either, by the way. First time I ever saw another Princeton grad here. Very proud, finally. This was adopted by the voters in I-76 in 1972. The general prohibition against use of public facilities is very broad and comprehensive, includes use of stationary postage, equipment, pretty much everything. I had some interesting public records. May not have time to go through all of them. One was from Kay Funk, a letter to Cynthia Martinez, who has since departed from interim city manager. It's not appropriate for the city staff to undertake rewriting the elected mayor proposal as the proposal is inconsistent with the current city charter. Please stop any such efforts. Ms. Martinez says, oh, you have that all wrong. You know, that's not what's happening. Only have three minutes here. Bruce Smith to Cynthia Martinez, usual copies, if that helps. Good to see you. Good. From Bruce Smith to Cynthia Martinez, I'll also be sending you for you and Jeff's consideration or thoughts and research of some of the legal issues that were raised last night. Probably next week. I, I did put in my name to comment on comments I'd already sent to you about the Strong Mayor, but I just wanted folks to be aware that there is a prohibition on attorneys working with people that are working on a ballot proposition. It's under the I-76 codified in the, in the state law, and I will be filing a complaint with the Public Disclosure Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a, agenda is the second public hearing on the 2020 preliminary budget for the city of Yakima. If any audience members would like to speak on the hearing, please fill out a slip on the table in the lobby and hand it to the city clerk. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Finance and Budget Director Steve Broome will introduce the item, and we do have one person that would like to speak to this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the benefit of those who may be wishing to speak or who are just watching and interested, I will preface the hearing with six slides just to review. You have all been through many, many hours of this. The, the budget has three goals, and these are just the state-of-process goals. To achieve all of these goals, the city has ended up with a balanced budget in every fund. Through your deliberation over the proposed policy issues, we did come up with what we believe are appropriately prioritized service delivery. And it, and most, not surprisingly, but it's a, it's a real achievement to achieve an improvement in the general funds reserve. Last year in January, you all convened with a strategic planning meeting, and we probably do that every year because we find out that, that budgeting isn't about money so much as priorities. These are the priorities, and I think that you'll find that just about every one of these is covered in the budget to some degree or another. These are the outcomes that when you're deliberating the different policy issues, it's important to know what your policy preferences are, what the priorities are. When you become a city councilperson, you find out that prioritizing doesn't so much mean what you want to do when, when there's new money. The problem is what to say no to when there isn't enough money. These are the numbers that encapsulate the entire city's budget in a one-page document. And at the very top line, we've got the general fund group, and that's perhaps the most significant achievement. We were able to have a proposed budget at the end of our study sessions that bring half, more than half a million dollars to the general fund reserves. Also, I just want to make a particular note that there is one group of funds that has a surprisingly large negative number, that's $12 million. It's not deficit spending. It's that these funds have been saving up, and this is the Enterprise Capital Fund. So that's things such as water treatment, wastewater treatment, the delivery and the distribution systems. So when they have big projects, they've been saving up, and now we're spending it down. So I think that's important to, to keep in mind. Lastly, there are a lot of challenges, and I don't need to tell you so much as perhaps the listening public, that these are the challenges that are the toughest to overcome. It was, it was very difficult to find ways to restore the general fund reserves. Every year, we bemoan the fact that property tax is capped and some money of our materials and personnel costs aren't. There are two challenges up there that are going to remain. There are still service departments that are understaffed, and we still have a challenge on replacing vehicles. However, that's our problem every year, and every year we have no choice but to pass a balanced budget. So with that, I want to list the accomplishments, and when we post, when we post our budget online, these will be listed. These are the accomplishments that you were able to approve as policy issues over and above the existing services, and there are many existing services, our, our existing streets, parks, police, fire, all of those we have, we have to do those no matter, but these, these were the advances that we were able to make. So with that, after the next three years, if we continue to stay on the trajectory we're at, we do have a long-term goal of reaching the general funds, fund, balance, reserves that we hope to attain. Tonight is the second of two hearings, and we expect to be able to adopt on December 3rd. Congratulations. Thank you for all the effort and time that you put into this process, and this is for citizens to be heard, so with that...
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. I do have one slip. Mr. Brian Robertson, if you'd like to come forward and speak to the council.
Good evening. My name's Brian Robertson, and I'm speaking on behalf of the International Association of Firefighters and the International Association of Arson Investigators. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Your job as councilmember is a difficult position, and I don't believe that you were thanked enough for your service to community, so thank you for being involved. Over the last several years, we have voted to eliminate positions within the Yakima Fire Department for the sake of the bottom line. In 2010, we eliminated the day investigator position. In 2019, we eliminated the captain's position for public education. We also eliminated secretary's position. The Yakima Fire Department Administration presented a source of funding with no additional, not only paid for the institution of the day investigator position that was eliminated in 2010, there was also no additional cost of the general fund, but instead an increase in a fee. Council to date has approved the fee, but not the position. So a business will pay more, but not get... So a business will pay more but not get any more service or protection. The citizens deserve a safe city, and this sleight of hand money management does the cities and the citizens a disservice. I prepared some statistics to show exactly what I'm talking about. These numbers are straight from our emergency reporting system at the Yakima Fire Department. In 2007, we had the day investigator position in service. 177 of those fires that we had that year, 35% were suspicious in nature or unable to find a cause. 2008, same thing, 35%, 149 fires. To date, in 2017, 241 fires go unsolved, and in 2018, 328. 55% of our fires are suspicious in nature and unsolved. In District One, we had, has the most fires of all of our districts, and we also have multiple arsonists working in the area that we haven't been able to catch at this time. We also burned two children in 2018. In District Two, we had a fatality fire last week. In District Three, we have 18 juvenile fire centers in Franklin Middle School alone, and we had a fire fatality in 2019 as well. In District Four, we had a fire fatality in 2018, and we also burned an apartment complex that displaced 40-plus people for multiple months. In District Five, in 2018, we had a $21 million single incident loss, and we also had a fire fatality in that district in 2016. In District Six, we also had a fire fatality in 2016. In summation, since losing the day investigator position, we're now seeing 55% of our fires not solved. We're also increasing our fires by 30% in the last 10 years. The Fire Department is now seeing a fire every 15 minutes with a suspicious fire every 27 hours. I urge the council to take a look at these numbers seriously and at the very least, vote on the day investigator position. Whether you vote yes or no, at least vote on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes, I have no other slips, so that concludes the public comments for the budget hearing. I'll close the public comments. Council, we will be looking at this for final adoption on December 3rd, and if you have any questions prior to that, you may want to speak to Mr. Broome. Thank you, Mr. Broome. Next is resolution authorizing a Tier Two hazardous materials fee. Fire Chief Aaron Markham will introduce this topic.
Good evening, Mayor Coffey, council members.
Good evening.
The item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the Fire Department to impose fees for services to occupancies required to report hazardous material quantities in excess of the Emergency Planning and Community Rights to Know Act. So during the budget workshop, the Fire Department presented a couple of new full-time employees for your consideration. In an effort to provide funding for either one or two of those positions, we offered some revenue sources, one being the Tier Two reporting fees, which was the most significant. In the policy issue, the item actually broke down what the revenues would be used for to include salaries, overtime, equipment and supplies, and our membership into the Tri-County Hazardous Materials Team. With the exception of our membership, the additional expenditures authorized, no other additional expenditures, excuse me, were authorized for the 2020 budget. The only one that was authorized was the anticipated revenue that the Tier Two fees would bring in. So as it stands right now, the department would be tasked with implementing these fees and services with the existing personnel. So I just wanted to make sure before you consider the resolution that that's how it was kind of presented. The expenditures were kind of encompassed in the narrative portion of the policy issue, and so at this time, I wanted to offer, if you had any questions regarding this, the deputy chiefs are with me and myself, and we could answer them before you decide on this resolution.
Council, any questions? Councilman Fong?
I think I'm going to have to ask to have my memory refreshed a bit on this. My recollection is that in the proposed budget, we were going to implement this fee, and we were going to fund the arson investigator position. Am I mistaken?
So we offered, we, in several policy issues, we brought in a couple of positions, one being a community risk reduction specialist, another being a daytime fire investigator for council's consideration. Neither of those positions were given any clear action as far as to proceed, and so essentially, those policies died and were not brought forward. And then at a subsequent budget meeting, the revenues revolving around the Tier Two reporting fees were adopted or were approved by council to bring forward with a resolution to adopt the fees.
And that's what we have before us today?
Correct.
The resolution.
Okay, and, but all the revenue from these fees would be absorbed in, well, it's replacing money that the department has already spent for uncompensated hazardous waste investigation. Is that correct? But it's, but as our proposed budget is, this resolution is not bringing any more funds, funds that could be used for filling another position into the Fire Department. Is that where we are?
Yes, that would be correct.
Any other questions? Attorney Nunez, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing the Yakima Fire Department to impose a fee for services to occupancies required to report hazardous material quantities in accordance with the Emergency Planning and Community Rights to Know Act.
Thank you. Council?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the resolution.
Second.
You have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution. In a second, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just briefly. Well, the Fire Department explained to us how this is a service that we're providing, and so this seems like a good way to offset those expenses.
Thank you. Council?
No, I think she said it great.
Councilmember Fong?
I assume that the threshold level for reporting hazardous materials going up to the Tier Two, that that is defined by state or federal agencies. Is that correct? Okay. And, okay.
Anyone else want to speak to it? All right, we will have a roll call, please.
Coffey?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the third quarter 2019 Capital Improvement Projects Report. Acton City Engineer Bob DeGroselier will introduce this item. Bob? Okay. Well, do we have anyone to report on this item? Ah, Bob? You're hiding in the bathroom.
I apologize.
That's all right.
The one item just ahead of me, I was waiting for it as a queue and on consent, apparently. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Welcome to our new city manager, who we have not met yet, but will soon. Just trying to give you a quick update of what we've been up to, and as far as most of our projects have had some activity on them this year. I will pretty much touch just on the ones that we have had some recent activity in the past quarter and/or bring you up to date on project information that may not be in the report that came out a couple of weeks ago. Starting with Garfield Elementary Safety Improvements, construction began the first day school was out this summer. Work is now substantially complete. By the time the project was completed, the school district had requested for one-way streets along Jerome and Fairbanks. We had a public meeting on May 29th to gain feedback, which was nearly 100% positive. That action went to council to have an ordinance to make those one-way streets, and those have been installed, signed, and striped, and so far as I know, things have been going smoothly. Next project is the North First Street Corridor revitalization from N Street to SR 12.
I have a question.
Cap?
Excuse me?
Yes.
We have a question.
Bob, when will the corners be final or be finished for Campbell?
The, I got notice today, I just kind of skipped past that one. The utility poles were not removed until about two or three weeks ago, maybe a little bit longer, and we got notice today that they're to be installed, I believe, this week, Thursday or Friday.
Great.
So finally...
I'm relieved to hear that.
Yeah. Us as well, you know, because school's been going for a while now, so it was disappointing that it took so long for the utility poles to be removed, but those are out, and that is, should be done here in just a couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there was like four or five panels that were missing.
Yeah.
Thank you for catching me on that. Back to North First Street, N Street to SR 12. Tappany Incorporated from Battleground started work in mid-March. They're 99.5% done. They're still doing some finish-ups pretty much on landscaping and some final touches and retouches on some things that weren't quite up to perfect snuff there. We, that, all that work should be done by year-end. We had put in for the next phase, Phase Two, which would be from, let's see, N Street down to MLK, we put in for a build grant for $23 million, which would include all that and also include H Street, which is part of the East-West Corridor. That build grant, we found out at the tail end of last week that we did not, we're not successful on that. Two projects were selected in Washington State. One was in Spokane and one was in Everett. And then the other, the other part on that, due to the passing of I-976, which is the TBD, that's, those, don't know when that income will really stop, but you guys know the results of that action, and so that will, you know, bring our TBD funds to a halt until, you know, things change. So we will not be proceeding with North First Street on Phases Two, and which would go from N Street down to I is one phase, and then I Street down to MLK. So that will be not scrapped totally, but just on hold until we can proceed looking Next project, Cascade Mill, and related to that, we've most recently had some, trying to get some action on, again, like I talked about, the East-West Street Corridor on H Street, which would be from First Street to Ninth Street. We, part of the build grant took part of that section of roadway out of the sawmill and was to fund part of that. That was unsuccessful, but we also have a pending TIB grant, which, for about $5 million, which would include H Street from First to Ninth, and also, I guess not just H Street from First to Ninth, tying into our lift funds, and the grants will be awarded this Friday, so we'll see if we're successful on that one.
Let's all keep our...
And we also have a pending, a pending project for the other 48th Avenue in Washington. We put in a grant for Signal on that one. So again, at the tail end of Friday, we will find that information out, how successful we were. Spring Creek Road and the, around the soccer complex of Sozo, construction started late April and was substantially complete in September. Street lighting has been installed, and we are waiting for PP&L to connect the electrical service. Everything's ready to go as far as the contractor's been. It's been over a month since they have been ready to go, but PP&L has not quite connected them up yet. Bidding for the next phase of Spring Creek Road will take place this winter after, we still have to finish up our wetland mitigation paperwork and make sure that our charter permit is all in place. The county is doing our design for us on that one. And hopefully, the next phase of construction, we're looking for, starting in April, which would be similar to what we did this last year, then hopefully that work would be done by the end of next year. Other roads similar to Spring Creek that we're doing this year, River Road from 34th Avenue to 40th Avenue, that's near the new YMCA Aquatics Center. Construction started early May and was substantially complete in September. We met our Labor Day deadline that we had, and the street lighting had been installed, and PP&L still had not connected that one, as well as like out on Spring Creek, but they are scheduled to connect that next Wednesday. I haven't seen the schedule for the Spring Creek connection. Hopefully, they'll do both within, you know, a short period of each other. Complete streets funding, we are on ad for project work. Proposed work locations include Race Street, Swan Avenue, Viola Avenue, and then Underground for drainage on Powerhouse, and right-of-way purchases will continue on Prash Avenue. TBD projects, which were the car tab feed revenues, we had, I can't remember how many, Steve could school us on how many dollars of revenue came in, but we had enough to get started on one of the first projects besides doing, putting some TBD funds towards River Road and paying back of the seed loan. We had funds in there to do Natchez Avenue Sidewalk, Walnut to Pacific. That included removing problematic trees that disrupt the sidewalks. We're replanning acceptable trees, repairing sidewalks, and ADA ramps. We have done most of that work, plants or the trees have been ordered and are to be planted this fall. Remaining work will be done in 2020. Fourth Street Sidewalk, very similar work, has started this year, and the tree removal is complete. Trees are also in order on that one, and sidewalk repairs are approximately 30 to 50% complete and will be completed next year. And that's again, that's in the first batch of TBD funds that we had. The North First Street revitalization, I talked about that. That's all I've got on that one. The Yakima Convention Center expansion. Bids were open on Halloween on the, right, the tail end of October. The low bidder is Total Site Services LLC out of Richland. Their low base bid allowed us to add all six alternates, so the construction totaled just under $10,000, $10,300,000. And then by, with adding other furniture, fixtures, and equipment, known as FFNE, to the professionals in the group, plus miscellaneous non-contractor items, we are under the $12.5 million budget and have a $400,000 contingency. Contract execution will be going, will come and be coming to city council on December 3rd.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you said it or not. Is there any, we have to look at the contract, is there any idea when construction will start?
The Convention Center would like construction to hold off till at least, like, say, January 1st, where most of the Christmas events, holiday events take place. And the first part would be working on the north parking lot, just north of the building, doing the underground work, but at the same time, we haven't seen a schedule from the contractor yet, and so we will see what he has determined. There's 14 to 15 months' worth of work to do, or at least time that we're giving the contractor to work, so depending on how he schedules his work and how aggressive he is, he could start. When we do have an update on that, I can sure get that to council and give a rough idea of what his schedule is going to be then.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Bob.
Okay, you're welcome. Wastewater Project Catalyst Development, it's in the vicinity of Vector and 40th Avenue and Kern. There's a hill up there that's under development. There's quite a few commercial development that has taken place. A lot of residential is requiring new gravity sewer, and we are able to, we're working with Catalyst Development and the city of Yakima to remove the Carriage Hill Lift Station and putting in gravity sewer to service that area. All work includes the relocation of, also the DID storm line into the roadway of the Catalyst Development Site. Bids were open September 20th. The low bidder was awarded to KLE, which is Ken Lang Gang Incorporated of Yakima for $462,000. Project started in October and should be completed by the end of the year, barring any weather setbacks. Stormwater capital improvements projects that started in the spring of this year have, went through, well, throughout the year, they have been all completed, $964,000 of work. And last but not least, on the list here, Northside Alley Pavement Project, may be finished by now. I didn't get an update in the last couple of days, but the work is anticipated to be completed in November, so it seems November's almost over. We should be right at the tail end of that. I've heard good news. The only thing is, is people keep asking, you know, when's their alley next? So send money, send money.
Thank you, Bob.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm really glad to hear about the Convention Center bid. I just wonder if we have any exposure for cost overruns?
There is, there is, there are contingencies built in outside of the $400,000, but the $400,000 is, you know, part of our, you know, makeup as far as the whole budget goes.
But is there an absolute cap?
Well, the $12.5 million is our budget, and so... Well, the twelve-point-five million dollars is our budget, and so we're four-hundred-thousand dollars below that right now. Should we run into some difficulties or have to make some adjustments along the way? We either find more dollars or we adjust the, you know, you know, purchases that we make or, you know, however we redo the building to reduce costs.
So there's some exposure, but not too bad?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is a discussion regarding a mobile application related to low-barrier shelter availability. Councilmember Hill, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, for, for brevity's sake with all, everything we have on the, uh, agenda tonight, I had a discussion with Chief Murray and Alex Meyerhoff, and I get the sense that, before we consider this anymore, um, I need to meet with, um, homeless, uh, service providers as well as some city staff, and I'd like it, if it's the will of the council, may I bring this back up on December third to discuss after doing a little bit more discovery?
I think that's, I think that's fine.
So.
So we will.
Anything staff right now?
Next is a discussion regarding shopping carts. Assistant City Attorney Jeff Scott, uh, will introduce this. Jeff?
Good evening. This issue, like you said, is a discussion about shopping carts, and it comes from the former Public Safety Committee. Uh, the Public Safety Committee sometime this summer, I think it was July or August, had asked staff to look into the issue of shopping carts. What was the city's response to it? So we prepared a memorandum just outlining what the current ordinance is. Uh, that committee then met, I believe in August, August or July, and instructed city to draft an ordinance that would amend Chapter 627, which is shopping cart regulations in two distinct ways. One is to increase the fine from fifty dollars to five hundred dollars per cart assessed against businesses, and also to reduce from ninety-six, ninety-six hours to twenty-four hours to the amount of notice that needs to be given for an abandoned shopping cart with proper identification to a retailer who, or whoever owns it to come get it before the city would impound it. Uh, those were the two things asked for. Uh, then it was that staff would then meet, discuss other issues and then report back to them. Uh, in the meantime, of course, that committee was eliminated, so we brought this back here on Agenda Preview, I believe, asking for some sort of guidance. And so I did prepare an ordinance, just so you could see, I mean, it's very basic. There's two things struck through. One is twenty-four hours or one is ninety-six, and then the other's the fifty-dollar. Uh, that's what was explicitly asked for by the Public Safety Committee. And then I addressed, I believe, possibly two other issues we might want to look at. One is this identification requirement to carts. There's an RCW, which I believe in the municipal code, or in this ordinance, we were attempting to adopt, and we may have, but it's a little inartfully done. And why this matters is, is the RCW lays out several requirements for how a cart is properly identified. One, and I, I won't go through them all, but there, there's more than just having Safeway written on there. You need to have like a number for somebody to call to return the cart, an explanation that the cart can't be taken off premises. Now, the reason this matters is if a cart is abandoned and it's properly identified under our municipal code through the adoption of RCW, then you have to give notice to that person. You need to call them, let them know it's here, and that's where the twenty-four or ninety-six hours is currently kicks in. If it's not properly identified, then it's an unidentified cart that can be impounded, uh, without any notice, uh, which is a different process. And so that's one issue, too, I wanted to bring forward. Another issue to address is, and this is, uh, in the limited commissions, which we did amend, I believe, this summer, uh, it states, and this is from a council directive or a council passing this ordinance in 2011, that the refuse code enforcement officers, their manager or supervisor can enforce the provisions of 627. And so it specifically assigns this shopping cart response to refuse only. It doesn't list law enforcement, doesn't lift code enforcement. And now with the Clean City Project, uh, where there's going to be additional code enforcement, additional refuse, uh, enforcement, that might be something council wants to look at and consider, too, is opening up the amount of people who can respond to this, since they'll all be sort of working hand in hand as a part of our Clean City response. So that's another thing I would toss out there that we might want to look at while we're doing this. So with that, I'll turn this over to council for direction.
Thank you. Council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Jeff and I, I don't know if you're at the meeting, if you're recall, you know, is good enough to remember if you were, but do you know how we, we got from fifty dollars to five hundred dollars? Was there a comparison to other communities or, you know, it's just, let's?
It was a number, um, that, uh, committee members just came up with, frankly. I, I don't know, and I shouldn't really speak to that, because maybe, uh, the committee members had something in mind. They might have.
Yeah, well, I think it, it speaks to the history of how we even got to this, so we have a current ordinance, and, um, as you see, this is a amendment to it. Uh, and so what's happened in the past, uh, even through now, is that the city will notify the businesses that their carts are out, and the businesses will say, well, that's, we'll just let it go. And so they don't make an effort at all to address the issue. They just eat up the, the fee, that whatever it costs. And, uh, and so that even when the ordinance as it stands is in, is, or the resolution is enforced, um, there's still a way out for these businesses to not have to actually come and clean up or pick up their carts. Uh, we did ask for staff to make an assessment on how this fee, uh, covers the expenses that it takes for the city to dispose of these carts. Uh, we had said that we wanted the increase of the fee to jump up, um, as high as possible to cover, uh, whatever expenses it took. So we said, you know, it might need to go up to five hundred. I'm not sure if the assessment was done by staff, so I don't know that this resolution is prepared to be approved today. Um, the fee itself, in order for it to be defined as a fee, should only be covering whatever expenses it takes to get disposed of these carts. So we might need to sit with Steve and figure out those numbers.
I think that would be something codes, refuse, we'd have to kind of figure out what actually the cost of the action is, and that's, you know, obvious, I can't tell you what that is, being illegal. I don't know.
Thanks, Jeff. I think, I think you answered my question as best you can. I agree with Dulce that we just, we should definitely cover the cost and, and have there be a hook to, an incentive to come pick up their trash, I mean, our trash, their stuff.
Yeah. Councilmember Funk?
Uh, just for clarification, if the carts are retrieved within the twenty-four hours, then they are not charged.
They wouldn't be charged anything, because the way it's written right now.
If they're retrieved.
The carts, they're notified basically, hey, you have a cart sitting at X, Y, Z location, and then if it's gone by the time city staff returns, then they wouldn't be assessed anything, because the cart wouldn't be impounded, so there'd be no action under the ordinance.
Thank you. Council, what's your, uh, direction? It's sounding like there might be some further work done.
I think we need some further work.
I, I don't want to kick it down the, I don't want to kick the can down the road to the next council. I think this is something we can decide in the next two business meetings. Uh, we just need an assessment of what it costs us to return a cart.
Exactly.
I don't think that that's a very big lift.
So I move the, uh, staff come back to the next city council meeting with the, uh, this resolution, uh, as amended, based on that assessment.
Does the council want to take any action with the limited commission issue?
I'm sorry.
With the limited commission issue about who has the ability to enforce this ordinance?
I, I want as many people as possible to be able to respond to this.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Well, I think it.
Or does it speak to that? Um, well, I amend my motion to also include that as well for the upcoming discussion. So would you?
Is there a second tonight?
I'll second.
Yes, second.
We have a second to the amendment. Would all those in favor for the amendment say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And?
So I'm sorry, uh, did you say in your motion? I wasn't listening very well. When is that going to come back to us?
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay.
Okay, would you like to repeat the motion with the amendment?
To bring this back, to bring back at the next meeting a resolution, although I believe it's supposed to be an ordinance, is that correct?
It is an ordinance.
It would be an ordinance. It would be amended to an ordinance.
To bring back an amended ordinance based on the assessment and include information on the limited commissions, is that correct?
Yep. All right, would you like to speak to your motion?
Self-explanatory, so thank you.
Any council members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this. And, uh, Jeff, I think you were also, um, related to structures in parks?
Yes. This is, uh, another ordinance that, uh, it would amend the Parks Code and add a new regulation in there, and this is something the council had asked for in a prior discussion at, uh, I believe when we were discussing the Clean, uh, Clean City Program. And so the title, I know when it was announced last time, structure, people are like, what are you talking about, structure in parks? So it's, it's designed to be very broad, uh, going beyond just the use of tents. So the issue that this is trying to address is, uh, the public safety concern of having these tents, enclosures, whatever you want to call them, in the parks where people can't see exactly what's going on inside of them. So what this ordinance would do is prohibit in city parks, any sort of, uh, enclosed structure, which is roof enclosure on the sides, that obviously isn't erected by the city or authorized by a special use permit for some special event, and then would allow, uh, code enforcement to, uh, declare this to be a nuisance and allow code enforcement to then mitigate that nuisance. Uh, it would not prohibit anything that has open air, so like, say, a canopy that has open sides to it, since you can see within that. I did talk to, uh, Ken Wilkinson in Parks Department and asked him about, is there any need for a permit currently with that? Uh, what I was thinking is, you know, many people use the parks, like, say, for a birthday party. They'll go to a, have a birthday party. You can erect right now a canopy, the kind of things you would see at like the farmer's market, without any need for a permit or government red tape or anything, and so this would not prohibit that. Uh, of course, you know, that would need to be applied equally across all populations and all uses.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Hill?
So I think the, the key is that it can have a, a roof, but no walls whatsoever.
No walls, and I.
All right. You have to be able to see straight through it.
You have to be able to see into these.
All right.
So, oh, do bouncy houses also get prohibited by this?
I don't know if about, I think, I'm not sure, and I know that Mr. Wilkinson is here, he might have some, gotten some weather or not, because that is one thing I thought of, a special use permit is required for a bouncy house, which it might be anyways.
Okay.
It is.
It is.
So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Would you like to read the ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance relating to parks and playgrounds, amending the city of Yakima Municipal Code for the purpose of regulating structures in parks.
We'll pass the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion to move, to pass the ordinance at a second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Councilmember Funk?
I think Kay seconded.
Kay, or whomever, would you like to speak to it?
I'm in favor. I'm glad we're doing this.
Okay, good.
Thank you for writing it up.
Uh, council, any other comments or input?
I agree with Councilmember Funk.
Okay, good. Uh, all those, we read the ordinance, haven't we?
Yes.
All those in favors, uh, this motion? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, Jeff. Next is a, uh, discussion on the mayor council form of government, and, uh, the council, we have approximately thirty people that would like to speak to this. Uh, so if you do have an introductory comment?
Uh, no, I, I, as I said last time, this is clearly a policy issue, so I don't have any comment to make, but if I, if you have any questions about the documents themselves, I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, council, do you want to hear from the public this time? All right. I have Alex Alexi, I'm terrible at names, Alex Set, Alexiatis? Alexiatis? Alex, if you would repeat your name and give us a city of residence, please. And before you start, uh, we're going to kind of get people lined up here. Uh, Alain Kane, Liz Hallick, Sam Johnson, and then Lindsay Johnson will be coming up in that order. Thank you. Thanks for the patience.
Hi, thank you, council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Alex Alexiatis. You were close. Uh, and I live in Yakima. So as a scientist, I usually strive to maintain, uh, or remain as objective as possible and avoid anything that speaks of activism or advocacy on a particular issue, so I can main, maintain my quote-unquote credibility as a scientist. However, on the issue of the special election for the adoption of a mayor council system, I feel that I can no longer be silent. Uh, I don't claim to be an expert in city governance, but I felt compelled to use my position of privilege, both as a white male and someone with a PhD, to speak out against this move that will set Yakima back where it was prior to the ACLU lawsuit in 2012. I moved to Yakima in 2015, shortly after living in Ecuador for a year, where I was conducting ecological research as a Florbrite Fellow, followed by a semester in China, teaching environmental microbiology at a large public university in Changsha. After spending over a year in a developing country, followed by a communist one, I welcomed the chance to return to the U.S., where we didn't have systematic voter suppression or the widespread economic disparities I had witnessed in those countries, or so I thought. I was completely unprepared for what I found here. On one hand, I've grown to love this community. I love this city, the people here, the location, and I see nearly limitless potential, given our geography, weather, and outdoor recreational opportunities. On the other hand, as an outsider, I saw a completely divided community. Every bit is segregated economically and geographically, as the deeply segregated Tennessee where I grew up. I couldn't believe the lack of representation of the Latinx community, um, and I was heartened by the ACLU lawsuit that took place before I got here, uh, and hoped that, uh, I could see the city work equitably to serve the entire community, not just those with the loudest, most well-connected voices. I've seen some steps forward and just as many steps backward toward this goal since I've been here, but I strongly feel that adoption of a mayor council system would maintain or even augment the status quo of oppression that will keep Yakima from realizing its true potential as a unique, vibrant, inclusive, and welcoming community. I strongly urge the council to reconsider calling for the special election to adopt a mayor council system. And I want to close by offering this picture to each council member as a reminder that just because something is equal, doesn't always mean that it's equitable. Please make the equitable choice and vote against calling for this special vote, and I don't know how I can pass this around, but yeah.
Hand it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Alain Kane?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for having people be able to comment. It's a wonderful feature of democracy, which is very important to me as an American. I too lived in two undemocratic places. I lived for one year in Sarajevo, Bosnia and Herzegovina, where they have a lot of ethnic division. They're trying for democracy, and our city here is the envy of the world. Do you know, there's an article about us in the New York Times. Okay, and then I lived in Mexico as a small child. I didn't notice the undemocratic nature of things. I was too little and innocent. I was just having a good time being a kid. But, uh, here, we have, uh, with this council mayor thing, people of privilege and wealth can always, no matter the system of government, protect their privileges. It's always possible, because you still have a voice. You still can be engaged. And people who lack privilege and connections don't have the same thing. I like the current system. Yes, it's messy. Yes, it's acrimonious, but guess what? Everybody has a chance. We had two votes over this in the past, and the ma, you know, the strong mayor, uh, system lost both times. I don't know why we're having this vampire thing come crawling out of its grave again, you know? But, uh, you know, please, we don't need it. You're all pretty competent. You guys are doing a reasonable job here. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. You as well. Liz Hallick?
Thank you. Um, for the record, again, my name is Liz Hallick.
For the record again, my name is Liz Hallick. Part of this process takes me back to speaking to a constituent in District Five who said, you know, as an older gentleman, I'm having a nice conversation, and it was a Republican Women's event, and he said, you know, my son didn't get into medical school because it was at the time when they started letting women and minorities in. And I kind of feel like there are some folks in this community that feel like Dulce is a product of affirmative action or something like that. But really, the Voting Rights Act is making sure that there's people that can talk to the people in my community in District One where I have my business because they're not going to talk to whoever's elected by the West Side. I talked to a young gentleman, I said, what happened to your face? Oh, well, you know, I got trapped under a car during a shootout in Halle. And he started telling me all about the fight and flight that he's grown up with because he grew up in District One, and his brain only functions one way because he grew up in such horrific conditions. And we need people like Dulce to be there for those people and change the community because they're not going to trust with a story like that, someone that, that isn't a part of their community. This is not an affirmative action program. It's about representation. I already submitted some comments. I have a problem with the process. We might agree, disagree on strong mayor, but my problem is with the process of putting forward the specific wording of the charter. Why is it a closed group that gets to do that? It's three people, and Cynthia Martinez, apparently, I learned today. In the city of Vancouver, they went through this proposal in 2004, should we have a strong mayor on the ballot. They had a 15-member committee, charter drafting committee, I mean, because this is our constitution, right, appointed by the city council. And it was an open process. MSRC came down, they had a whole work session. Why is it only three people get to be a part of writing how this is going to work? I'm sure there's a lot of people in this community that maybe are for a strong mayor, but they want to be a part of the process. So why are we circumventing the ACLU consent decree through a closed process? Let's make it open to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I'm going to repeat the names now. Sam, if you'll give me just a moment. Sam will be speaking next, then Lindsay Johnson, Ben Johnson, Kathy Tierney, and Kaylee Seelick. Thank you. Go ahead, please. If you'd repeat your name and city of residence, please.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Sam Johnson, and I live in District Six. It's frustrating that we all need to be here again, speaking out against the strong mayor proposal. It's frustrating that councilmembers Hill, White, Coffey, and Cousins seem either incapable of understanding the simple and undeniable repercussions that the strong mayor will bring or are willfully ignoring the obvious harm that the proposal will bring Yakima and especially the Latinx community. If that's the case, it begs the question, who do you represent if not us? Two weeks ago, you heard from over 20 community members and constituents who opposed the proposal. There have been over a dozen letters to the Yakima Herald in the last month, and social media discussion is overwhelmingly in opposition of the proposal. It is clear that your community and constituents understand how bad the strong mayor is for all of Yakima, and it seems ridiculous that you, councilmembers Hill, Coffey, Cousins, and White, cannot. The arguments against the repercussions of the strong mayor are simple, undeniable, and have been repeated for weeks, but I will state them again. Perhaps if you hear them enough tonight, you will understand. It will cost taxpayers millions of dollars in litigation that we are likely to lose. It will strip away power from the council, which are the most reflective and representative of each of Yakima's district and in turn Yakima as a whole. It will dilute the voice and representation and violate the voting rights of the Latinx community, just as city council elections did prior to 2015. It will open the door to corruption, much like Wapato was seen. It will create a political atmosphere, much like Spokane, where elections are tied to whichever corporations and wealthy individuals support. It will drastically reduce the pool of qualified candidates to run our city, and it is the same proposal that was voted down just eight years ago. All of these pitfalls point to the strong mayor being a good thing for only one group of people, regardless of what you want to call them, Yakima's wealthy and influential or the good old boys. The average Yakima resident, and especially Latinx community, will gain nothing from this change and in fact will suffer. I am once again asking my representative Hill, as well as representatives Coffey, Cousins, and White, to listen to us. Listen to your community members, who care so much about the welfare of our city that we are spending another Tuesday night here speaking to you. Listen to your constituents who elected you on the belief you would truly represent what's best for all of Yakima and vote no on the strong mayor to keep Yakima united. However, if you choose to ignore your community, if you choose to ignore your constituents, if you choose to submit Yakima to the obvious harm this proposal will cause, to serve Yakima's good old boys, then we as a community are demanding that councilmembers Hill, White, and Cousins accept responsibility and show accountability and publicly commit to resigning the remainder of your terms if the strong mayor fails in February. You will have violated the trust that your constituents and Yakima has placed in you. You will show you have disconnected from your community and from the city, and you are unfit to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next will be Lindsay, Lindsay Johnson.
Yes, and I have a colleague here with me. My name is Lindsay Johnson. I reside in District Five.
Fabiola Lopez, and I'm actually from Wapato.
And we are here representing Planned Parenthood of Greater Washington in North Idaho. That is our local Planned Parenthood affiliate serving the Yakima community. At Planned Parenthood of Greater Washington in North Idaho, we strongly believe that people deserve to have their votes counted and to be accurately represented in government. We urge the Yakima City Council to not move forward with a strong mayor system as it will create barriers for people of color to be fully represented. We know if all people's voices are not included, then politicians will make decisions that can actively harm them. This proposal was on the ballot and defeated in 2011. The message was loud and clear then, but here we are, less than a decade later, considering it again, as there's a new movement underway to undo progress that is blind to the law and our own history in Yakima. It is nothing more than part of a larger effort to skew elections and disenfranchise people of color. This proposal is at odds with state law after the passage of the Washington Voting Rights Act in 2018, which we were proud to support. This historic legislation paves the way for communities across Washington State to find local solutions for an issue that has existed since the founding of our democracy, how to ensure minority representation in a system of majority rule. And the shining example for why the bill needed to pass was in Yakima after the state Supreme Court ruled against the city for its at-large districts. The case was about fairness. Returning to this old model creates a structural wall of exclusion that guarantees that Latinx voters, despite having run for office in election after election, cannot elect their candidates of choice. Many of the thousands of patients our Yakima Planned Parenthood Health Center serves each year are Latinx, the same communities that historically have been disenfranchised and continue to face unnecessary hurdles and discriminatory voter suppression laws when trying to vote. These disparities hurt our democracy and disproportionately impact disenfranchised communities. When it comes to elections, we should be removing barriers to representation, not creating them. As a trusted healthcare provider, Planned Parenthood of Greater Washington in North Idaho is committed to fighting for justice for every person and to empowering everyone to participate fully in their communities and the democratic process. We will continue to join voting rights advocates in condemning voter suppression and standing against the discriminatory tactics like the Yakima strong mayor proposal that are systematically used to target communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next we'll have Ben Johnson, and then Kathy Tierney, Kaylee Seelick, and Mike Gimpler and Dave Edel.
Councilmembers Hill, White, Cousins, and Mayor Coffey. A few years ago, when talk of a plaza first started to circulate, it included space for traditional mercados. As I understood, the point of that space was to acknowledge the racial divide in our community and step towards addressing it by including a strong Latinx presence in what was to be our most proud and used public area. The idea was to make sure that it was very clear, this space is for everybody. The mercado idea was scrapped early on in favor of a farmer's market area at the behest of downtown business owners. The reasoning, as explained to me at the time by our city economic development manager, was in so many words that existing downtown businesses, the owners of existing downtown businesses explicitly told him they would not support the plaza if it featured predominantly non-white owned businesses. Instead, our city leaders, instead of having an ounce of decency, dignity, or backbone, they rolled right over and licked the boots of white supremacy openly being worn by local capital. I was ashamed of our city leadership. We can fast forward a few years when this council allowed ICE flights to come into our community. You've had other examples of cities that told ICE to beat it with no legal repercussions. You've heard from your own constituents, the terror and the hurt that ICE brings into this valley. And instead of, again, having an ounce of decency, dignity, or backbone, you fore-rolled right over and made sure our city again licked the boots of white supremacy, this time worn by the federal government, this time under the cowardly guise of legal prudence. I am again ashamed of my city leadership. Today, you want to take away the right of this community to fairly elect its own leadership, something explicitly rejected by voters only eight years ago. As if that's not enough, you want to put us in serious legal and financial risk to do it. As far as I can tell, you're doing this at the behest of a few community members who have already exercised outsized levels of power and influence. Are you so eager to join their ranks that you're willing to trample and steal the rights of a large part of the community you supposedly represent to do it? Are you so ravenous for power and boots to lick that you don't care what your community thinks of you? Do you have no shame left? Maybe you don't, because you, Brad Hill, Jason White, Kathy Coffey, Holly Cousins, haven't stopped piling shame onto the people of your city since you were elected. Your cowardly and now obviously self-serving actions in office are a stain on our city that will take years to wash out. However, I have no doubt that eventually, the good people of this town, many of whom are in this room tonight and waiting outside of it, they will clean up your mess, and you will be disregarded by your city as ineffectual relics of a long and shameful history.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Kathy Tierney.
My name is Kathy Tierney. I've been a resident of the city of Yakima for over 23 years in District Five. I oppose the effort by the city to reconsider adopting a mayor council or strong mayor form of government. Yakima has a history of voting rights violations, which ultimately resulted in a federal lawsuit, which the city lost, and a consent decree that requires a process that promotes diverse and fair participation in our city council. The strong mayor form of government puts the taxpayers at substantial risk of again having to pay for this council's violations of federal law. Yakima taxpayers have already paid in excess of $3 million for violating federal law, and that could have easily been avoided. This proposal costs too much. Many of the candidates who recently ran for office indicated the biggest priority was to make better financial decisions and to beef up city reserves. We cannot afford to pay a mayor $120,000 and an additional $180,000 for a city administrator to help the new mayor because that mayor will likely lack expertise to run a city. I'm concerned that this mayor does not have to have any expertise or experience in running a city. They just have to be a resident of Yakima and get elected. The process of moving this proposal, requested by only a few individuals, seems rushed, without sufficient review of the city's own charter, legal, and social implications, and it seems undemocratic. Only a few individuals asked for this. Many are opposed, and a similar proposal was rejected, as you've heard many times, in 2011. There has been insufficient review of this issue despite all of the dissent that's been expressed by individual citizens of this city and by attorneys who are experts in voting rights issues, which I am not. Why is this council in such a hurry to put this on the ballot for February in an off-year election? I certainly hope it's not because voter turnout in off-year elections is particularly low, especially among young people and people of color. Having a mayor with greater powers than the council means that a few voices may influence that one person, instead of having to build support from the various districts that represent the diverse citizens that make up this community. Recent votes show our city council has frequently divided on race-related issues such as proposals to make Yakima a welcoming city and to ban ICE flights from our airport. Today's New York Times, New York Times, featured an article setting forth facts that show the changing demographics of Yakima and what this means for not only us in this city, but for this country. Yakima has an opportunity to make choices to be a model city for the rest of the country and to tackle tough social issues like racism, segregation, and inequity by following and respecting a democratic, inclusive process. I ask you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Kaylee Seelick. After that would be Mike Gimpler, Tony Sandoval, and Dave Edel.
Good evening. My name is Keely Seelick. I am a new staff attorney at the Northwest Immigrant Rights Project, a nonprofit legal services organization in the lower valley. I'm speaking here today on my own behalf, not representing my organization. I also happen to reside in Seela, but as I think folks here know, living in Seela has not stopped class-privileged white people from getting involved in Yakima city politics, so I thought I'd share my opinion as well. I urge the city council to reject the proposed changes to the city charter. There are many operational arguments about why the strong mayor system will hurt the community, but in my mind, there is one clear and predominant risk that outweighs any perceived benefits to a strong mayor system. And that risk is the moral disaster of backsliding into policy that systematically and structurally disadvantages marginalized and low-income communities of color. The success of the Voting Rights Act litigation five years ago resulted in frankly incremental, but nonetheless historic, forward progress in Yakima when it comes to civil rights, equality, and Latinx representation in political leadership. To embark now on a policy path that disrupts the positive potential of a district-based voting system suggests on the part of those pursuing it, bad faith at best and overt racism at worst. And it reflects obviously an attempt to circumvent the intention and spirit of the result of the litigation. And the notion that it will be a democratic decision if put to the people through a special election in February is a joke. Voter turnout in off-year special elections is reliably low. You know that. And deciding to put the matter, and deciding to pursue it in this way just suggests a desire to cut out people's voices. So I urge the council to follow the leadership of Councilwoman Gutierrez and reject this proposal.
Thank you for your comments. Mike Gimpler.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gimpler, and I speak on behalf of myself as a 33-year resident of Yakima regarding the proposed strong mayor proposition. The strong mayor system will be more expensive. The elected mayor will get a large salary, but the elected mayor won't have the professional training necessary to run a city, so she or he will have to spend even more money to hire someone to help them. When you need a professional, you hire a professional, not someone with no training who pretends to be a professional. That's why we hire a city manager as a professional trained in administering the complex machinery of a city. All that an elected or strong mayor does is add another layer of politics on top of the professional administration that a city needs. They may be able to financially support an additional layer of mayoral politics in large cities, but Yakima is a small city and doesn't need to spend more money on creating another political structure, which will not be a panacea to our problems. Some people are frustrated with the city council and are looking to the elected strong mayor system as a solution to the disagreements. But city council needs to work things out between themselves. That process will bring the best results for our city. That still needs to happen, even if a strong mayor is elected. An elected mayor won't solve that problem. So please, don't put this proposition up for a vote just to appease a small group of people trying to force this new political structure on the city. The city council should go forward with the existing structure and try to make it work by really listening to each other and working together, which ultimately we will all have to do anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gimpler. All right, Tony Sandoval next, and then we have Dave Edel, Nicholas Malmstrm, Jackie Beard, and Gina Ord.
Yeah, I'm Tony Sandoval. I live in the city of Yakima, District Four. Should you decide to put the strong mayor on the city council, you might end up like, you might end up with me as mayor. So let me break things down. I've seen a lot of wasting in the tax dollars here in our community, and some people have mentioned some of the waste, but I've broken it down a little bit here. $3 million to stop the voting by district. In 2020, depending on what math you do, the gentleman just presented, the city could be in 12,000 in the hole. The propositions you're going to put on the ballot will cost you $54,000, $50,000 to start with, $4,000 for the other ballot. And also, the city's going to be legally challenged, as you know. So the other thing I want to point out, District Two, Five, Six, and Seven cooperate in going for a mayor because you just don't wake up and say, oh, all four of us think that a strong mayor should be the way to go. That could be illegal. After wasting taxpayer money, you're putting a tax rate on property, you're going to do seven new fees, is what I heard. I don't know if it's finalized or still talked about. There's going to be rate increases. If you put this ballot on as a strong mayor, I would be stopping a lot of the waste of money that's happening. The city can't afford it. Taxpayers are tired. Trust me, I've been on levies, and those are even hard to pass, so. Trust me, I've been on levies, and those are even harder to pass, so I urge you to keep things as is.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Mr. Edel?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, new city manager. Look what you're sailing into. I don't want to do the virtue signaling. I don't want to do the travelogue in where I've been and where I haven't. I just want to point out a couple of facts. The job of the council representative is to just do that, to represent, to determine the interests, wants, and needs of the citizens of this community, and then bring those together and try to find a solution for the greater good. The city sinks or swims as a whole, so the task is to negotiate and blend the various district interests and concerns into a workable blueprint for progress. How do you know what those needs, interests, and wants are? Well, events like tonight, people show up, people are online, people are in the paper. You talk to businesses, you do your job, you do your work, you talk to different groups, you try to limit your personal agendas, you try to limit outside influence, and then you make your decision and you act. That's the structure of the city council and how it works on the day-to-day matters. But what are some of those bigger matters, such as the structure of the city itself? Those require greater input because it's the biggest picture of all. The gentleman referenced the plaza earlier. We put the plaza to a vote, and we heard what folks said loud and clear. Some people, some of us, me included, didn't want to do that, but we certainly got the message loud and clear, didn't we? The people spoke. Millions of dollars, years of work, stopped in its tracks. Why? Because the people spoke and had an opportunity to speak. So now the question of great significance is before you once again, the city's structural significance. The job is to find out what people want. How are you going to do that? Well, we've heard about the vote before. 358 votes would have turned the last election in eight years. You know how small 358 votes is? That is 110 votes less than Ms. Gutierrez got to find her position here on council. That's all it would have taken eight years ago. A lot of water has gone under the bridge in the past eight years. Times change, opinions change, new challenges, new controversies crop up. The council's job is to find the best solution now, today, for what the opinions and thoughts are today. What's the best way to do that? You've already used that once before. Put it to the people. You hear all of the fears of what's going to happen. On the one side, we're afraid of the government coming after us because of ICE flights, and the other, we're not afraid because of ACLU. We're inconsistent, we're emotional, we need to deal with facts. The greatest single fact is, let the people have a say, and then we're done. Put it on the ballot, get it over with, and then we'll know. We don't have to deal with speculation, we don't have to worry about threats. The idea is to move the city forward in the best way possible. And the best way possible with this particular issue is, the people involved, the small group, how can they do it? These are some serious business people who love this community, who've been involved in projects in this community for decades. They love this place, they're trying to make it better, they deserve to be heard. Take their idea, put it on the ballot, it's out of your hands, and it's the people you represent, and after all, the bottom line for you is to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholas Malmstrom, I'm sorry if I... And then Jackie Beard will be after that.
Hi. Thank you, council. Good evening. My name is Nick Malmstrom. There's three N's there.
Okay.
It's all right. I live in District Five. I would encourage the council to not put the strong mayor proposal to a ballot. If you want to look at it from a fiscal perspective and be fiscally responsible, you know that the lawsuit is pending. It's going to happen. So you want to think with a dollar? Do that, right? Furthermore, if we go to a strong mayor, its symbolism is to further the racial divide of our community. We all can agree that that is not where we want to go. The strong mayor is a concentration of power. How un-American is that? And I believe that we will see an increased risk in corruption, as other members have alluded to. My understanding is that the strongest reason for a strong mayor system is that we have an inefficient council because we can't come to agreements on issues. How about we work on conflict resolution and coming to build consensus and move forward as a team? So that's my perspective on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jackie Beard, and then Gina Ord will be after that. Following that will be Tom Sun, Demone Harris, and Felipe Rodriguez Flores. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jacqueline Beard. I live in Yakima in District Five. I'm here tonight to lift up my voice in addition to a lot of other very thoughtful and well-reasoned comments to encourage the council not to put the strong mayor proposal on the February ballot, mostly because I'm concerned about the impact of that initiative on silencing the voices of my neighbors, especially my low-income neighbors, my neighbors of color. I'm also concerned about the concentration of power that's inherent in the strong mayor form of government. I'm concerned about its potential for corruption. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money and that we shouldn't be spending that money to defend this ballot initiative in a lawsuit, especially in a city such as ours with limited resources. So I would also echo encouraging this council to spend some of those funds on conflict resolution resources and to look in your hearts, find common ground in order to allow policy disagreements to be voiced constructively and with compassion for the human impact of this council's decisions rather than just bulldozing diverse perspectives with a strong mayor. We elected you, our council, to bring diverse perspectives together to form inclusive policy, and we continue to put our full faith in your ability to do so with open hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Ord?
Hi. My name is Gina Ord, and I've been living and voting in Yakima since 2008. I live in District Five, Kathy Coffey's district. I was inspired and heartened by the ACLU ruling in 2015 that finally allowed for representation by district in a racially segregated city. I was proud to see three Latina council members elected and the hard work that they have put forward since then. I believe it's our duty as citizens of Yakima to enhance the current leadership structure under the council manager structure, which allows representatives from all of the districts to not only work together to determine a mayor but to advise and guide that person's actions. If changed to a strong mayor system, the current city council members would not have the same input on major decisions. This input is not only from them, but it is also input from their district residents, many of whom have been disenfranchised by our local voting systems. At the last meeting, Dulce Gutierrez eloquently pointed out in her closing remarks that a strong mayor system would not only dilute her say as a councilperson but also dilute the voice of the people in her district. Other comments from last week's meeting also talked about council members' collective obligation to consider the interests of all residents of Yakima. My request is for all council members, especially my district representative, Kathy Coffey, to consider the impact of a special vote for strong mayor. Who would really determine this vote, especially if it were to be put forward in February? If you really want to put it for a vote, put it in November when there is historically a strong voter turnout, especially in a presidential election year. Kathy, thank you so much for your three terms of service to this city. As currently appointed mayor and also somebody who has been a general council member who has served alongside diverse mayors, I ask what legacy you want to leave. This will be one of your last decisions as a council member. Please consider all Yakima residents from all districts in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Tom Sun, and then Demone Harris.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and welcome to Yakima. I come to you with a commitment of my constituents when I said common sense. And first of all, I would like to say, even though I was not successful in my run for the city council position in District Three, I would like to thank Patricia Byers for a very fair campaign, and I wish her well, and I think she'll be an excellent councilwoman. But I've learned a lot in this experience in my first effort to run for any type of government position, and that was that the city council is not listening or making attempts to listen to the common folk, the blue-collar workers, the people who work from 8:00 to 5:00. They are not taking the time to listen to them. Okay, so you can set up a committee meeting somewhere and whatnot. These people work from 8:00 to 5:00. They're not available to get there to do that. Kathy Coffey, you've been involved in so many things in Yakima, so many of them have been beneficial to the city of Yakima. Dulce, you've brought a new light to Yakima. I'm sad to see here in the end that there's been so much controversy. There is a lot to say about the city of Yakima and how great it is, but we have had a council, and not just you current council members, but some of the previous councils, that have lost the interest of the public, and they need to restore that. I at first supported a strong mayor system. However, I think that we have a weak city council as far as the relationship with the people in this city. We had two very controversial city managers. Prior to that, we had a long-term city manager, and the people are confused, they don't care anymore, they don't want to vote. I would love to have time to share with you a lot of the comments that I received when I doorbailed at 2,000 different homes, but I won't take the time to do that here. What I am going to ask you is to reject this, my opposition to this, because I think February is too soon. I learned in my election failure that it is special interest groups and good old boys' club that run this city, and you people, some, have given into that. Don't. Represent the people in your district and then represent the people in the city of Yakima. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sun. Demone Harris, and then we'll have Felipe Rodriguez Flores and Naomi Sanchez.
Hello, how are you doing today?
Good.
My name is Demone Harris. I'm the president of NAACP in Yakima, Washington. And what I have to say tonight, this is not enough time, so for the many years Yakima NAACP has been designed, following the design of our district structure with great admiration, this latest twist to redo our government structure, to me, is a simpler way to get around the Judge Rice order. I'm here to tell the council today, we stand by the ACLU once again to fight and protect the winners in this previous lawsuit. We are all winners here. Let's not forget that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Felipe Rodriguez Flores?
Hi. Good evening, council members. I have some things that I tried to say last time I spoke to you regarding this issue. I mean, I didn't get to them, so I will just continue with that. So one thing is, you know, I was talking about the equity study and the importance of looking at equity issues. And right now, there is a Washington State Office of Equity Task Force that basically met at the Southeast Community Center. There's an Environmental Justice Task Force that's meeting here in two days. So these are issues that are being dealt with elsewhere. And I, you know, have experience dealing with, you know, I'll just mention environmental justice issues, which the Yakima Valley has some of the most egregious environmental justice issues in the country, frankly. The largest concentration of dairy farms in the state, if not in the Pacific Northwest, is in the Lower Valley, which is also the only majority Latino area in the state, and that's not a coincidence. You know, these are very large facilities, the ag industry is becoming increasingly consolidated, and so the people who are drinking water that makes their babies sick, you know, who get like Blue Baby Syndrome because the babies can't get oxygen in their blood are predominantly Latino, and they're people who haven't had a voice by design because, you know, agencies like the Guama and the Clean Air Agency that are there to oversee the industry are actually controlled by the industry. So, you know, and drought impacts, wildfires, things like that affect communities of color because they don't get notified in their language. When ecology was creating that permit three years ago, they did not have a single page of information in Spanish during the public comment period, even though they had met extensively with the dairy industry. So, you know, these issues of political representation go directly to people's quality of life. And, you know, it was really appalling for me to read a social media post from a current council member who said that, you know, if District One were represented by a white person again, that it would be a sign of progress. I think that, you know, the city council needs to look at the precedents that have already been set, and yes, I'm talking about you, a council member, white. The council needs to recognize the precedents with Montez versus Yakima, with the entire history of voting rights. I mean, Yakima County has had lawsuits because of language access and because of having a literacy test. So this is not a new issue, it's not something that the ACLU just brought up five years ago. So you need to look at that history and think about, is this something that you want to rehash yet again? I live in District Five, Mayor Coffey, I remember you were, you know, the one member back when the city council was all Caucasian who supported dropping the appeal, but yet this is what keeps being brought up again. So please, vote no on this misguided proposal.
Thanks. Naomi Sanchez?
Naomi Sanchez from District Two. The support of a strong mayor system further displays the racism in Yakima and the continued disregard of the Latino community because you are willing to lose millions of dollars again to oppress the Latino community, but you're not willing to lose, but not willing to lose millions of dollars to stop the ICE flights. This displays that the people who claim to represent our community, in other words, you, will stop at nothing to suppress and continue to oppress and further marginalize my community. The argument that our city council only does things for their representative districts is completely false. If that were true, the East Side would have a pool, it wouldn't be in District Five. The Henry Bochamp Center would be in the process to getting funding, to get the renovations, to further support our community and the programs that they so desperately need. There would be money invested on the East Side and not only on the West Side, we wouldn't have economic discrimination. You keep saying, "Let's leave this up to the people, let the people vote, let them decide," but what you're failing to acknowledge that is, in a special election in February, it will not be equitable. Voter turnout in an off-year election is extremely low, especially for young voters and voters of color. For Yakima, where nearly 50% of our population is Latino, that means that their voice will not be heard. Voting in favor of a strong mayor system means that you are complacent in the continued oppression of our community. If there is no justice for the people, let there be no peace for the government. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Severino? Please come forward and restate your name since I did such a terrible job.
Sorry.
And your city of residence.
I'm here actually with the group.
I concede that. So you will have five minutes on the...
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine.
So we're going to be handing some sheets to you all?
You need to hand that to the clerk and she'll pass it out. Thank you.
Awesome. So hello, my name is Giovanni Severino. I reside in District Seven. I am here today to speak on behalf or with the group Yakima United for Change. So we're here to talk about the strong mayor issue. So we all know, I'm pretty sure you know now, hopefully you know, that strong mayorship will dilute the power of the districts, which would ultimately dilute the presence of Latinos in community, in the government. It would give one individual enormous amount of power, and some of the concerns that we have with that is corruption, forms of nepotism, and misuse of power. These issues have been brought forth multiple times. In fact, experts were brought forward, were brought here to the last city council meeting to talk about that, and they mentioned those issues. This has already been put up for a vote, which costs money, by the way, to create a special... This has already been put up for a vote, which costs money, by the way, to create a special election. And people voted against it. Are you thinking of all of Yakima when you are pushing this forward? Better yet, let me ask you, when you think of Yakima, who do you think of? Clearly not us. I would hope that the intention of this motion is in good faith. And even if it is in good faith, I'm here to tell you today that that action will negatively affect a large population of Yakima. It will take taxpayer money, taxpayer time, your time, energy, and it may bring us back to an unfair system that will dilute our voices. Putting it up for a vote will prevent non-voters from having a say and would only allow a few amount of voters that vote in special elections to participate and have a say for the 90-plus thousand, the 90,000-plus people that live in this city. Put it up to the people, well, we're here today to represent those people that couldn't be here today. A very few amount of them actually vote. So that's what you have in front of you. One of us made a public records request. And Mayor Coffey, your name is mentioned in some of these emails. It seems like you made up your mind two years ago. Let me read you the date, 14th of April 2017, where you're talking and you send an email to Carmen Mendez, who opposes strong mayor. So I'll just read it really briefly. I guess no need to ask you, Carmen, how you feel about strong mayor. I'm very sorry that this has been reduced to such unfortunate comments. Basically, I mean, you have it in front of you. You were in favor of a strong mayor two years ago without even talking to the rest of us about this issue. In one of the emails, actually, Dave Edel's name is brought forward, where you mentioned that, where is it? It's in one of these. Oh, here it goes. "I spoke to Cliff today and asked him for his thoughts. Many cities our size that go onto an elected mayor also have an administrator, either city manager or administrator. I think that the position would go into effect and would remove the city manager if we go into strong mayor." And then later on into that, you say, "I'm not sure who would want to be mayor, but know that Leda did before and probably still does. No, no, no. Thanks, not him. But who knows? There's going to be a lot that will want it, including Edel. But there are a lot of good people out there. See you later."
All right. You got this. Look.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Susan Palmer, and I just live in District One. And I am the one who requested these records years ago because I wanted to know how long this conversation has been going on and how they put Holly two years ago. The discussion was, get Holly to advance it, not you. And the other thing I want to specifically point out, Mayor Coffey, is that, I'll read you this from your email. "The desire for strong mayor concept isn't driven by Bruce Smith. Rather, the change is due to the district-specific elections. My and others' worst fears have come true. No one is looking out for the entire city. Every decision has become district distinct with no regard to what's best for the city at large. I'm researching the concept, haven't come to a final decision yet. But do you know, we can't continue with the hostage-taking, revengeful, spiteful, South Morick way decisions are being made now." I would say that what is happening right now is hostage-taking. Thank you.
My name is Christina Ortega, and I'm from District Two. You guys pretty much know me, I've been here a couple of times. But as you can see from those messages, you also publicly disclosed things that were going to be coming up for a vote. It's in your email, it's right there. We'd ask that you refuse your vote.
Thank you. Your time is up. Emily Morris.
If anybody wants, I'll pick up your email.
Emily Morris. Alfredo Gonzalez Benetts. Oh, Emily.
Hi, council members. My name is Emily Morris. I've been a resident in Yakima. I originally moved here in 2015 as a Jesuit volunteer AmeriCorps member. And I'm coming today to add my voice to the people who are here to say no to the proposition, to put it to a vote for the strong mayor. Along with many of my community members, I'm against this because it will disenfranchise the Latino-Latino voters in our community. I think the city council needs to take an honest look at our city and the divisions and do their best to make decisions that are in the best interest of every member of our community. The ACLU has made it clear their plans to sue. And instead of fighting that litigation in the name of keeping power among white leadership of the city, I think there are better uses of this city's money. I am here tonight at my first Yakima City Council meeting because I want to live in a community where the voices of all are heard, all of the voices are respected, and where they are not systematically trampled over in the name of concentrating power in the hands of a few people, of a few white people specifically. I would just like to reiterate the comments of many other community members here this evening, that I am opposed to the strong mayor system because it will dilute the voice of the council, which is the most representative of our community. And I believe that the mayor should be accountable to the city council. So if you would, please hear our comments that we would like you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Alfredo Gonzalez Benetts. And you'll probably want to repeat that. And city of residence, please.
Sure. Alfredo Gonzalez, I'm an attorney with Columbia Legal Services. I am here again to urge the council to reject the proposed charter for the same reasons that I mentioned at the last council meeting. Additionally, there is no reasonable basis to pursue the change and to rush it through in a way that deviates so significantly from the procedures that this council has used and recommended in the past for similar situations. We heard a comment earlier about a charter commission that was used in a past situation. The proposed charter change ignores the principles of fairness. And it would have the effect of robbing a significant segment of our community from their political power, from their voice. Considering Yakima's recent legal history and the steep price tag of a special election for our taxpayers, the proposed change merits more thoughtful consideration and community engagement. And as was mentioned on other issues earlier today, let's bring the other side in on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenton Gartrell. And I see Kenton, you've noted that you are speaking for a group.
Hi, my name is Kenton Gartrell. I am actually the only one here that lives on North Sixth Street in the heart of District One. You see, we look at Yakima and say, we know what it takes to make our economy stronger and fairer. We know what it takes to make our community safer. We know what it takes to make living more affordable and retirement more secure. We know that, we know that we need to strengthen, not abandon, the promise of our culture. We know that inclusion makes us stronger. And so, by the way, do the immigrants who come here to play the rules, play by the rules and build better lives. We know what it takes to lead the world, both with the example of our power and with the power of our example. We know what needs to be done. Listen to our opponents and you will hear a different refrain. Listen to all of their talk about liberty and freedom and government getting out of your way. And what you, what you will really hear is one thing over and over. We are powerless in the face of our problems. There's nothing we can do. But I want to ask you a question. What if, at the most pivotal moments in our history, their philosophy had won the day? What if at the height of the Depression Franklin Roosevelt looked out on America and said, "I see one-third of a nation ill-housed, ill-clad, ill-nourished, and there's nothing we can do. There'd be no Social Security, and today 22 million Americans would be thrown into poverty just like that." What if John F. Kennedy saw Russia getting ready to point nuclear missiles at us from Cuba and said, "There's nothing we can do." What if Lyndon Johnson had said, "I know we say all men are created equal, but there's nothing we can do." There'd be no Civil Rights Act, no Voting Rights Act. These Democrats say there's nothing we can do, as if government is some entity that rules us. This is the same stance and rhetoric they used on the subject of ICE flights out of here in Yakima. This is, this is a democracy. Government is us, by us and for us. And creating the Yakima we want is up to us. You have a choice. You have a choice between a party that's too radical, and yes, it is almost entirely radical, says government can't do anything. And then we get into office and set out to prove just that. And you have us who look out on Yakima that we too believe is exceptional, but we know isn't perfect, and seek to make it that, and seek to make it that much more beautifully beautiful. So if you want to make Yakima a beautiful place, there is a sure way to do it. Take back your turf from these political radicals, bought and paid for by political dogma and priests from Seattle and elsewhere. If you want someone who can fix it, there's, there's an easy way to find that someone. Look at your neighbor, to the left, to the right. We are the solution, not one, not I, but we together. And I want to say something to those of you who have chosen to make Yakima your home. I know there are politicians who say that we are segregated, and hate filled with bigotry is our rhetoric. Segregation keeps people like you and I apart. They say they want to feel scared that no one wants to live here or there, yet I live exactly in the heart of where, of where they don't want to live themselves, and I love it. But I want you to lead a city that will allow you to work, play by the rules, and better your lives here in Yakima, choosing to be, create, and live where you want to be. It is not Yakima that is broken, but them inside. We are progressing forward, and if letting you decide what forward is by giving you the right to vote, what is really wrong with that? Then maybe aren't, then maybe they aren't thinking about anything but the word "I." And they should soul-search why they are so against you, brothers and sisters, fathers and mothers. Recently, I read a story about a woman named Linda who came to America from Syria. Her crime back at home was to live in a neighborhood where several people had led a peaceful protest. So Assad's government bombed their neighborhoods. Soldiers ransacked their homes, stealing cash and jewelry. Linda's five daughters had to walk around army tanks to go just to school. And then Linda gave birth to a son because he was born with yondis. He was receiving treatment at the hospital when the government, believing that a rebel was hiding in the facility, shelled the building. Her child's life lasted all but seven days. So tell me, whom among you has truly felt segregation? Whom among you have suffered so by another human's hands? When did we become so grossly narcissistic in our politics that we forgot we are Yakima? If you're someone who can trace your family to this country before the pilgrims even arrived, God bless you. I'm guessing most of us can't. So let's make Yakima the beacon of hope, of beauty. It was for our parents and grandparents and great parents. Why can't it be so for our children and ourselves as well? I will promise you this, that if this passes council, I am creating a political action committee that will counter-run America, and I will guarantee you 500 votes in District One.
Thank you. Your time is up. Eve Martinez.
Annalena Nunes.
And then Annalena Nunes, followed by Nick Markey. Edith Martinez.
I think she's coming.
Okay, thank you. Yes, if you'd like to come to the podium, restate your name and state your city of residence, please.
My name is Annalena Nunes. I live in the city of Yakima, in District Two. I'm here to express my opposition to the strong mayor system. Moving forward, this change is fiscally irresponsible when we are very likely to be sued and find ourselves in expensive litigation. The resources spent on fighting this case are better spent on improving public safety or on gain prevention programs. There is no guarantee that those running will be qualified or will have the experience to run a city with a multimillion-dollar budget and hundreds of employees. If an incompetent mayor is elected, they can only be voted out in the next election or through a complicated and expensive recall process. A strong mayor does not guarantee stability if a new mayor is elected every political cycle. Having a strong mayor can lead to corruption. If a citizen makes a significant donation to a mayor's campaign, the mayor could feel obligated to reciprocate that action with favors. It would allow those with power and money to influence a mayor's veto power to go against the city council majority. On October 17th, I emailed my representative expressing concerns. I never received an email response. As a candidate, he visited my neighborhood multiple times, and I admired his grassroots campaign. I voted for him because I thought he would effectively represent the voice of his constituents. I am disappointed to see that that is not the case. I urge you, Jason White, to vote against the strong mayor system. Thank you.
Thank you. And by that, I presume Edith Martinez is not present?
Oh.
Oh.
She is.
We just went in different order. Okay. If you will please restate your name and then your city of residence. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Edith, and I live in District Two. I'm here to express my opposition to the strong mayor system. Should the strong mayor system be enacted, this would give unlimited power to the mayor. The lack of the job requirements for the mayor role are alarming and overall, it's a fiscally irresponsible move. It is alarming that my city council representative continues, continues to be in favor of this change when many of his constituents are against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Markey.
Marquez.
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 Hi, Nick.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nick Marquez. I'm a Yakima business owner, and I've engaged in the community thanks to the selflessness of you guys participating in council and city decisions. I have seen a change in the city of youth engaged, and after the whole night and the conversations that I heard, I don't think I have to say anything else. Overwhelmingly, what I heard tonight is a community out there, and then there's Dave Edel and Kenton. That's who is out there against the strong, or for the strong mayor. Brad, we're fellow servicemen. I'm a veteran, you're a veteran, so is Dave Edel to give it that. But as veterans, we have a model or a way of life saying that we do for everybody, not just one person. Over here tonight, we've seen and heard all the testimonies tonight that are against the strong mayor. Kathy, you've been in a previous council, you're here in this council, your decision has never wavered from being against the city manager or the strong mayor. And I urge you, you've been an inspiration to me and a lot of other people, and the service that you've done for so many years. And I want you to know that you've, your service is, we're thankful for that. Holly, Brad, Jason White, you guys have all taken a step up. But overwhelmingly, tonight, we've heard the community speak. I'd like to see the opposition or the people that are for the strong mayor come up here and speak. If they have so much to say, I want to hear them. Bruce Smith, ex-commissioner Mike Leda, which I know, they're great people that have served this community. But I want to hear their voice because I don't hear anybody else for the strong mayor. But when it comes to you guys to decide, please give it a little bit more time than a shopping cart conversation. Tell us how you guys feel. Tell us what your district believes that you should do for your district, and make us, convince us what your decision is. This encompasses not just voters, it encompasses the community. That's who's spoken and taken their time to be here tonight. I'm just a sole voice. I am engaged highly in the community, thanks to you guys. You guys are an inspiration and should be an inspiration for the rest of the community. All the young kids out here, I just see their smiling faces, and I want them to see them in you. So thank you for your time and your service, Kathy. Done a lot for the city, and thank everybody for tonight.
Thank you, Nick. Rohil Yamontes. Yeah.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here to present you with a petition from business owners and community members from District Two, especially it goes for you, Mr. White. We, the inner-city business owners and residents of District Two, do hereby certify that by signing this petition, we're asking Yakima Council Member Jason White to reject the proposed, the proposed changes to the city of Yakima charter to create a major council, a strong major form of government. In 2015, a federal judge found that the city of Yakima violated the Federal Voting Rights Act, citing systemic discrimination against Latino voters and discriminatory treatment of predominant Latino communities. The strong mayor proposal would have the impact of weakening the relative authority of the city council and of undermining the reform required by the court. Rather than to send a strong, the strong mayor proposal to the, to the... the strong mayor proposal to the ballot in a special election in 2020, which will lead to further litigation, we urge Councilmember White to turn his attention to clearly identify needs in District Two that he has rejected and neglected. Funding long needed improvements to the Henry Busham Community Center. Advocate for a community pool next to Washington Middle School. Improve public safety through investments in basic infrastructure like the street lighting. There are more pressing needs facing District Two and the City of Yakima than a strong mayor proposal. That proposal before the council member was designated without community input and community engagement. It is very similar to a measure that Yakima voters rejected in 2012. The council should not waste taxpayers' money on a special election in 2020. We affirm our belief that all Yakima residents make valuable contributions to our community and economy, regardless of their race, ethnicity, and immigration status. Furthermore, Yakima residents deserve to have confidence that the tax money are being used wisely. Councilmember White, as our elected representative, we urge you to reject the proposed change to the Yakima City Council Charter, to the Yakima, to the City of Yakima Charter, to create a mayor council form of government.
We oppose the strong mayor proposal as it is a step backwards to justice and equity. It is not fair that we need to continuously come here and say that... I just don't understand, like, why we continuously need to come and speak against all this stuff when you guys are human beings. You guys should understand why we so desperately, like, not need the strong mayor proposal, not need ICE here. Like, you guys are human beings, so I don't understand.
In August 22nd, 2014, Judge Rice granted summary judgment for the lawsuit that was filed on my behalf in Mateo Teaga. In February 2015, Judge Rice also granted the proposed remedial plan that we proposed. In March 2015, the same judge denied motion for consideration that the city council filed in favor. So I'm going to hand you the petitions with signatures from residents of District Two and some business owners from District Two.
Thank you. I have a, the next request is from the Latina Community Fund. There's not a name. It's a group. Okay, thank you.
Hello, city council members. My name is Maddy, and I am a youth organizer with Latino Community Fund. And so today, I brought the youth that are part of the Alianza Leadership Program with Latino Community Fund. And Alianza is a youth-led program of collective voices, connecting leaders to unlock their leadership potential and bring change to their community. And we do that through civic engagement, so this is why we're here today. And they're going to introduce themselves and talk about why they're here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jose Lombarena from District Two.
You want to get close to that microphone.
Hello, my name's Jose Lombarena from District Two, and I oppose a strong mayor.
Okay.
My name's Oscar Severino, and I live in District Seven. And I'm here to oppose the strong mayor.
Hi, my name is Esther, and I'm from District One. And I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about myself, and that I go to YB Tech. I have a part-time job as well as being a part of the Alianza Steering Committee. And I'm also in a Young Executives of Color Program with the University of Washington. But mainly aside all that, I'm a senior in high school. And I'm applying to colleges and scholarships and grants, so you can imagine, right now, it's pretty stressful for me. But I wanted to make sure I set aside time to come here and share my opinions because I'm 17 years old, and I feel like I am losing the rights to vote before I'm even given them. It feels like the value is being taken away from getting a Latino in the position of the city council because you're leaving the decisions to one person, whereas the diversity in one person rather than in a group. That being said, I want to leave you guys with a question to think about. If a Latino was to be elected a strong mayor, are you going to change the form of government then?
My name is Oscar Zambrano. I'm the director of civic engagement and advocacy for Latino Community Fund. And this is like less than civic engagement 101, so thank you for allowing us to be here. And it's also their first testimony ever in public, so give them a round of applause for that. And allow this to be a testament that the youth are watching. The fact that, you know, youth of color in Yakima make over 50% of the future populace. The fact that Yakima, for many years, people of color, especially Latinx community, did not have a voice here. And so we just want to say that the youth are watching. You all are here. You know, there's always bickering, but you are the example of the youth. The thing is that however you act here, and also in closed doors through emails or not, the youth are going to be watching. And the fact is that they're the future. So however you vote today, they're going to be watching. They may not be able to vote, but they have strong feet and good voices. And they can convince people to vote in the next election. I hear comments right now that, you know, that this council put up to vote whatever. If you really want to make sure that people have the largest say, put in the November election. Voter turnout is higher. You get more people to give you input into this decision. The other thing also is that this city council, this is not your decision. Some of you are leaving. Allow the new city council to take this up and continue the conversation. So as Latino Community Fund, along with the youth in Alianza, we oppose this. So make sure that the youth's voices are heard and also that the people that elected you have a say, not in the next election, in February on a special election, but make it in November if you really want a large population to give you input. And for the new city council coming in, make sure that you know that people are watching, youth are watching, and they're going to get engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mike Lada.
Honorable council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. You have a tough decision to make here tonight for our community. I just want to tell you extemporaneously here that I've, for all of my life here, and I am a resident, lifetime resident of the City of Yakima, I've never been in favor of the city manager form of government. Here we are 20 years later, and after a momentous decision, which was appropriate five years ago, we still find ourselves in a quagmire of ineptitudes and inequities. And that's not right. It's time to consider a different way of doing business. As far as the issue about the ballot being in February, Yakima County and the state of Washington has endorsed a mail-in ballot system where everyone gets a ballot to their home, and all they have to do is take, in this case, probably less than a minute to vote yes or no. It doesn't matter what time of the year the election is. So if you choose not to vote, and by the way, I think everyone now in this entire community is aware of what's coming forward. So it is your right and your opportunity to vote. If you don't vote, look in the mirror and see where the problem is.
Mr. Lada, if you would address the council.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm used to sitting. Never mind. So I have owned and operated two successful businesses in this valley for over 35 years, and I currently serve as a county commissioner for now nearly 15 years. I've seen, therefore, both the private sector and the public sector way of doing business. Without reservation, I respectfully say tonight to you that the City of Yakima needs to change the way it's doing business. We can choose to continue to struggle with the longstanding community disparities with the old bureaucratic city manager system. And I will tell you that Yakima County is bigger or as big as the City of Yakima population-wise, but our budget is less. And our budget has not nearly increased to the extremes that the City of Yakima's budgets have increased over the last decade. You continually get spoon-fed that you need to raise taxes, you need to raise fees. Well, who's watching the expenses? You need strong leadership. This community deserves good leadership. It's offensive to say that no one is going to come forward that is qualified.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Edler, Dave Edler.
Thank you, Mayor Coffey. Council members, I'm Dave Edler. I live in Yakima in District Three. I'm a former council member, a former mayor. I have a strong bias. That bias is very simply that everything rises and falls on leadership, which is why I'm standing behind the strong mayor, which I do want to commend the opposition for their activism tonight. I believe that we need an elected executive. And I would argue against some of what has been said tonight because this does not change the makeup of the council or how the council will be elected. I was in support of that change and believe that. The majority of the top 10 cities has the form of government that we are suggesting. A much larger percentage of the 50,000-plus cities has this form. The rest of the cities in the state have, by a wide margin of cities, those who have the form of government that we're proposing. And there are very few organizations in any other part of our culture that are run the way the City of Yakima runs. My personal experience is that as I sat on the council, as many of you are, I began to ask myself the question, this is not working very well. And what is the problem? And the first thing that I looked at was myself and the people sitting at the horseshoe with me. And yes, we looked at things differently, but these were actually good people that I sat around the horseshoe with, bright people. But it was the people that sat around the horseshoe that were constantly ridiculed and attacked for the way that they felt and the things that they believed in. So then I asked the question, is it the system? We have no elected official who is integrated into the everyday operation of this city. We have a manager who manages, but I don't believe that you can lead by committee. So I brought this to the attention of our community and helped drive the first campaign, which you've heard talked about several times. And the community at that particular point was not ready. Change comes hard. Today, I have people stopping me all over the community saying, this system has not gotten better, it's worse. To which I respond to them, it's not the people, it's the system. We need to change the people. People who were opposed are asking us to be a part of a campaign should we get to a place where we actually have to have a campaign. In our divisive culture and the games we play to make those who oppose us out to be evil, I want to thank the council members that have indicated by the last conversation that you are in favor of this change of government. Because tonight's the kind of night that I remember, and it's a difficult night to sit and to listen to and to have people say the kind of things that they've said to you. But to me, this is a nonpartisan issue. It is an issue that really does determine how this community goes forward.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
That concludes our comments for this evening. I would like to thank the folks that have had an opportunity to speak and the audience for their respectful attention to the comments. Council. It is now an opportunity for council members for comments and/or motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a motion. I move that we approve the resolution that passes the community members' proposed changes to the Yakima City Charter on February 2020 ballot.
We have a motion to, I'll need that if I'm going to read it specifically. Have you gotten the motion? Okay. Just a second, Carmen. I move that they approve the resolution that places the community members' proposed changes to the Yakima City Charter on the February 2020 ballot.
Carmen, can you hear that?
Can we hear her? Carmen?
Yes, I...
Okay.
I would actually, I would like for an opportunity to make, take maybe a five-to-10-minute break. I'm only five minutes away, and so I'd like to be able to at least make the discussion portion of the meeting.
I think that we have a full lobby. We have a full chamber.
I know.
Just be here as quickly.
Five-minute break, if I may. I'm asking for a five-minute break. If you're not willing to do that, yes, continue on with the discussion. I'll stay on the phone, and I'll show up to the council chambers in three or four minutes.
Okay, that would be fine. We'll see you in a few moments.
Madam Mayor, I do have a clarification question on this motion.
Thank you.
The community members have put forth three different versions. Which version, may I ask?
It's the latest version.
The one that was emailed to the council on Sunday.
Correct.
Is that a clarification enough?
Yes.
Councilmember, no. Councilmember Cousins, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, yes. This community has discussed this matter for years, and this council has considered it for months. It's time to let the people decide. I support this change for a number of reasons. I believe that the people of Yakima should be able to choose the person who runs City Hall. I believe the city council would function better acting solely as a legislative body. I believe at least one person in City Hall should be answerable to the city as a whole and not just to a district. And most importantly, I believe the people of Yakima have the right to decide for themselves how they want to be governed.
Councilmember White, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah. You know, so much has been said tonight, and, you know, people that are very passionate come out to speak. But, you know, many people, including Latinos, come up to me on a regular basis and thank me for the great job I'm doing representing them. So, you know, I think enough's been said, and I think that people will vote in the confidence of their home and their safety of their own home. So I'm ready to move forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hill, do you have any comment?
No, I don't have any comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, any other comments? Councilmember Funk?
Well, I was going to raise a point of information. There should be a fiscal note attached to this, the cost of putting it on the ballot. Do we have that figure?
Approximately $5,000.
What about exactly?
Well, we don't have fiscal notes attached to our resolutions or our ordinances, so we will continue on. Do you have any other comment?
Well, I guess my first comment is that I'm unhappy that we don't even understand the cost of this, and it's not in the budget. Okay. So I am against this for so many different reasons and so many different ways, and I appreciate all the community participation that has articulated some of those concerns. I am against this because I think it brings us a worse governance process and decreases subject matter expertise, which we dearly need. Speaking to whether our city council is inefficient, yes, sometimes it is, sometimes it's not pretty to look at, but all in all, I think that what we've done in the last almost two years that I've been here is not too bad. And that is largely in part...is largely because we do have disparate voices which tend to cancel each other out, and so that the divided authority of the council results in intrinsically conservative results. It helps us avoid passage of ill-advised motions, and I would like to continue with that process of divided authority. Certainly, the concerns about the Voting Rights Act have been aired. I'm not going to further comment on that, but I am...I would like to comment on we face the near certainty of litigation on this issue. We have no money in the budget for it. Our budget has already cut essential services, like we would like to have an arson investigator, we would like to have more wiggle room in our department budgets, we'd like to have the planning for the Henry Beauchamp Center. That's all been cut out. And even with what's been cut out, there's nothing in the budget to fund this litigation, which will not be covered by our litigation defense insurance. The very least that can be done to avoid that liability exposure is to let the proponents for the elected mayor's system collect signatures and pay for placing it on the ballot themselves. That way, it is not an act of the city placing this measure on the ballot, and the city would have substantially less exposure to sue. And I think that that is not very much to ask. If you want to do this, protect the city by decreasing our exposure to those costs. To fail to do so and to make this decision in which the city is at risk of these costs and no individual person faces a single dollar at risk is unconscionable. Thanks.
Councilmember Mendez, she...no, she already passed.
Your turn.
Go ahead, I'm still catching my breath. Yes, please.
I've spoken a lot about this and against the Strong Mayor from government. I think that this is a terrible mistake that the city will be paying for at the expense of taxpayers, and it's really unfortunate to see folks disregard the majority of comments, not just once, but more than once here before the council, and still move this forward, in some cases without even making a public statement as to why they're moving it forward. There have been...there's been speculation that it's possible that council members have interest in running for the position themselves. So I would...I move to amend the motion to include the resolution associated with this ballot measure to add the language, be it resolved...therefore be it resolved that current city council members refrain from running for mayor of Yakima should the ballot measure be approved by the voters.
Second. We have a motion. That's enough. We've had respectful discussion, let's keep it that way. It is seconded. We have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak further to your motion?
Yes, this is just a precaution...
Amendment, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a precaution that I think is important to ensure that this decision is being made with integrity and not with conflict of interest.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to...
She has said it all.
All right. We have a vote for the amendment. If the roll call, please.
Coffey?
No.
Cousins?
No.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Mendez?
Yes.
White?
No.
It fails four-three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's very likely, or even it's possible at the very least, that there might be a conflict of interest here. But moving forward to speak about the ballot measure itself, I think it's irresponsible to put this ballot measure on the ballot without notifying or cautioning voters about the potential expenses associated with litigation. So therefore, I motion to amend this motion to include language on the ballot measure itself that says, "If approved, this proposal is likely to result in a civil rights lawsuit against the city of Yakima, the cost of which will ultimately be paid by taxpayers due to a federal court order establishing a history of voting rights discrimination against Latinos."
Second. We have a motion and a second, and...City Clerk, were you able to capture that motion?
I will repeat that motion for the city clerk. I move that the motion is amended to add language to the ballot measure that states, "If approved, this proposal is likely to result in a civil rights lawsuit against the city of Yakima, the cost of which is ultimately...will ultimately be paid by taxpayers due to a federal court order establishing a history of voting rights discrimination against Latinos."
Would you like to speak further to your motion?
Yes, I would. It would be irresponsible to lead voters into supporting something without them being fully informed that this could potentially and very likely end up in expensive litigation. This is something that we need to do in order for voters to make a fully informed decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendez?
I completely agree with her. I think that it's completely responsible of council members who are here to lead or to put this measure on the ballot thinking that there aren't going to be any consequences. We have stopped many, many projects because there has been a threat of litigation from a few individuals sitting here today. We have stopped projects because of that, because we are afraid these business owners are going to come and they're going to sue us. Why aren't you afraid now?
Is that...
It's not a question for you. It was just a statement.
Concluding?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm concluding now.
Anyone else want to speak? Councilmember Funk?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea, and I'm certainly in favor of that in February there will not be a voters pamphlet or any type of standardized discussion of the pros and cons of this ballot measure.
Thank you. Any other council member? Hearing none, if you'll repeat the motion.
Mayor, can I make one point for the council's consideration?
Yes.
In this version that has been moved for...to be forwarded for consideration, there is one legal issue in Article Two, Section Five. The version that I'm reading says in the second sentence, "The clerk shall call special meetings of the council upon written request of the council president or two members." The Open Public Meeting Act 4230-080, Section One, requires that a special meeting be called by the council president or a majority of the council.
Okay. I'd like to go back to the amendment at this point. Would you like to repeat? Do you have the motion?
Amend this motion to add language on the ballot measure itself. "If approved, this proposal is likely to result in a civil rights lawsuit against the city of Yakima, the cost of which will ultimately be paid by taxpayers due to a federal court order on discrimination against Latinos."
A federal court order establishing a history of voting rights discrimination against Latinos. Very close, though.
Okay. All right, a roll call, please.
Cousins?
No.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Mendez?
Yes.
White?
No.
Coffey?
No.
Fails four-three. We'll go back to the original motion, please.
Well, I'm still not done with my portion of comments. So, you know, it's not very surprising. I did arrive today with the full impression that neither the legal risks or the litigation expenses were of concern to the majority of my colleagues, so I'm not very surprised by that vote. But I do think it's important that we still provide a total amount of additional expenses that this would incur for the city of Yakima. That's a typical...that's a very common practice to allow voters to know how much it will cost to approve something, and right now, it's not included in the ballot language, and it should be because the resolution itself will require that the Strong Mayor gets paid more than our highest-paid city employee, and that is probably our police chief who's paid almost $150,000 a year. So we would...excuse me? He's paid about $145,000 a year.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And so the Strong Mayor would need to be paid more than that. Perhaps it'll only be $146,000 a year, but it would still be an incurred expense that's not currently being considered now in our budget. And so it would be great to have this included so that people can also make a fully informed decision now that they won't be informed that this potentially cause...will be the cause of litigation. So therefore, I move that this motion include on the ballot measure itself the language that says, "If approved, this measure would increase city of Yakima expenses by an X amount of dollars annually over the next ten years," with that X amount of dollars being determined by our finance department.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'm sure you want to speak to your motion.
Yeah, I think that this is money that could be going to other investments in our community. We're going to start paying someone six-figure salary every single year to come in and constant... and hold a concentration of power that will not be really truly checked or held accountable by anyone other than special interests initially. And so I'm concerned, and I think that people need to know how much this is going to cost us, how much we're going to pay this individual before making a decision and voting.
Would you like to speak here?
Yes. And just to remind city residents that not only is this paying for the city manager, you know, $150-plus thousand a year and all the benefits and everything else included, so add an additional 30% to that. Furthermore, we're going to have to hire a city administrator additionally. So two very high-paying individuals, individuals who will be here and pretty much just appointing, firing, doing whatever they want, and you can shake your head all you want, but you know it's true. You know it's absolutely true.
Okay. Any other comment? Councilmember Funk?
Yes, I certainly agree with those comments. This is money that the city doesn't have. We're already cutting into critical budget items. We're losing all of the car tab revenue, and we have little likelihood of getting much revenue from anywhere else. I was excited that...about doing a levy lid lift, hoping to engage the voters in the need to fund essential services, coupled with this action, which is not going to make the voters happy. I think that the probability of a levy lid lift passing becomes vanishingly small.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council members? Hearing none, do you want to...would you repeat the motion and...or excuse me, the amendment, and then roll call?
That this motion include on the ballot measure itself the language that, "If approved, this measure would increase city of Yakima expenses by X amount of dollars annually over the next ten years with X amount being determined by the finance department."
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Mendez?
Yes.
White?
No.
Coffey?
No.
Cousins?
No.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Fails four-three.
Well, I am trying my best here to make this an informative ballot measure and make it transparent, and also ensure that there isn't a conflict of interest. It's clear to me that that's not a priority for the majority of council here. At this rate, I just want to say that it's a...I think I'm mostly disappointed, and the longest-standing council member here, Mayor, I've expressed to you my disappointment, and we talked about this issue two years ago when you were not sure that you would be re-selected to be the mayor in this format of government, and you decided not to bring it up then, and you got your wish to be...to stay mayor. I'm really disappointed that you did not follow through on what your commitment was to diversity, inclusivity, and equity, and that's where I'll leave my comment.
Thank you. Do we have a further comment?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like that this be...this initiative be...well, not initiative, not...
Ballot measure.
Ballot measured be put on the November ballot. I think that that would create an opportunity to have a more informed council, and I mean not informed council, but city residents, an opportunity to get qualified city residents to run an effective election. You know, I don't...I would guess that none of my council members here would be opposed to making sure that we have enough time, an appropriate amount of information to city residents, and it'll be included in the voters pamphlet. So I think that this is a great opportunity and also an opportunity to have greater turnout. As we know, I did hear somebody mention that, you know, every resident gets ballots sent to their house, but as we all know here in Yakima, not every resident takes advantage or exercises their civic responsibility to vote. So that's my motion to add it to the November...
Motion to amend it?
Correct.
Motion to amend.
To amend, to add to the November, the first two...
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to amend the motion to November, and we have a second. Would you like to speak further to your motion?
Not at this point.
Would you like to speak to your...the motion?
The only reason to not do something like this is if you are actually relying on low-voter turnout, and you want low-voter turnout to produce your desired outcome.
That's enough.
And so I am absolutely in support of this. It's really important that we try our best as a governing body now to ensure that folks participate in this as much as possible. This is not something that you should find to be inconvenient. This is not something that you should find to be more expensive than what you're currently pursuing now. So there is no reason to not move this forward to a November ballot, so I'm supportive of this amended motion.
Thank you. Further comments? Hearing none, if you will repeat the motion of the amendment?
Amend this ballot measure to be put on the November ballot.
A roll call, please.
Funk?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Mendez?
Yes.
White?
No.
Coffey?
No.
Cousins?
No.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Fails four-three.
Okay, so that was for the amendment. I haven't had an opportunity to talk about the motion. Everybody else has, I think. Correct?
I'm not...we have not had...we've not done the...
Oh, okay, let's go around the horseshoe.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I already did.
All right, Councilmember Funk?
I already did.
You already did.
Yeah, I did.
Just that end has a...that end of the table.
Councilmember Hill?
Go ahead, I'm waiting for you. You're the one who was late. What do you got?
Yeah, no, I was actually present.
Do you have a comment?
I do.
Go for it.
You're talking about me being late. I was present at the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to. Stop it. We can go all night.
I'm here all night.
Okay. You know, I'm not only completely disappointed in the council members here, I think it's very important that we know and that council...or city residents understand who is really behind this. And, you know, last time I said, you know, I've only seen three people, four people come and tell us their names, and, you know, on the last...I got an email from one individual telling me that they supported this. And then, you know, in contrast, we have a full chamber of individuals, city residents, that are here letting us know that they do not want this. So I...I don't understand why you guys are doing this. I don't see the piles of signatures from city residents. I don't hear, you know, where you're getting your information, that these are the constituents that...that they want this. Where are they? I see maybe five right here, and it's those same individuals that continue to want to a good old boys' club. They're right here, rolling their eyes, thinking that, you know, it's okay to continue to manage the city the way they have been. But, you know, it's interestingly enough, those individuals who've called council members and say, "Don't hire a city, or interim city manager, hire me." Yeah. Have you guys ever read about that? No, right?
Yep.
But that happened.
Really?
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Smith definitely wants to run the city. He asked us if he could be the city manager, the interim city manager.
Oh, I'm still-
Absolutely true, and there's public records about that.
So, it's interesting to hear that, you know, that has been going on, and none of the council members are willing to not stop it here. I don't understand. You know, for a lot of things, you'll say, "Oh, let's not vote on the city manager until we get the new council on board." Then why are you so rushed into voting now? Why? I don't get it. I don't get the tactics behind this. I don't understand why you guys continue to push this. And you guys, you know, I'm in, I continue to be shocked by the fact that this is an us against them. This is not an us against them. This is about a few controlling the power. We get it. You know, we got here four years ago, you didn't like it, you still don't like it, and you have been doing everything that you can to vote us out. And guess what? You've done it, but you have not and will not win this fight.
Thank you.
I'm not done. I'm sorry. I just took a pause. Yeah, I, I'm not going to say anything. I just, I would hope that you guys see through this. Councilmember White, you live in a district that represents the Latino majority, council members or residents. They're asking you to not vote against this. So, I just, I don't understand why you guys are so rushed. I don't get it.
They won't explain it either.
Yeah.
She's speaking.
And I wish I could go through every single one and say all these things, some good, some bad, but I'm not going to. I think that your silence, your directive now speaks for itself. And when we get a lawsuit, I hope you guys welcome it because it's going to come out of the general fund. So, I don't have anything else to add to this-
Thank you.
-discussion.
I think we've gone around the table with the exception of Deputy Mayor. Would you like to speak to this issue?
I made three motions, and you guys voted against all three of them. I'm pretty sure you guys don't care what I have to say, so let's just move along.
They don't.
Okay. I think that we have, if you'd like to repeat the original motion.
The original motion was to approve the resolution that places the community members' proposed change to the Yakima City Charter on the February 2020 ballot with the clarification that it is the third version emailed to council on Sunday.
Thank you. I would like to ask also about the point that was made by the city attorney. I know that my colleagues like to believe that Mr. Smith has greater expertise around this documentation and the creation of it than our own legal attorney in council, but I still believe that our council makes good points, and we should take that into consideration.
So noted. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
So, are we-
We have a motion.
Do you guys not care what our city attorney just mentioned to us?
I think it's been noted.
And yet, you're approving-
And you have the-
-the language without-
So, we're-
Excuse me.
I have a question, and I'll wait for my time.
We have a motion, and we have discussion, and it is time to vote on the motion.
Point of information.
No, we're still having discussion.
I just, I have a question about the motion.
All right.
So, the current motion that we will be approving, Jeff, is it the city version, or is it the-
It's Bruce Smith's version.
The three-member version, the three resident member-
That I was speaking to?
Yes.
It is the one that has been raised for consideration, the third version.
So, is that the one that we're approving now?
That is the one that you're discussing for approval.
So, we're not even considering our own legal motion, or?
Okay, what is a point of information?
I cannot believe this.
What does approve for consideration mean in terms of authorship? Could that be clarified, please?
This is not the one that the city prepared.
Yeah, no, I know it's not. That's why a conflict of interest clause would be so wonderful, right? Because you guys are not even following what our own city legal staff has provided to us. You're following the words, literally, word for word, verbatim, what Mr. Bruce Smith, Dave Edel, and Mike Layda have put together for us with, and just completely disregarding Jeff Cutters, who's our city attorneys, counsel, and advice. Madam Mayor, please, you're the mayor now. Do you have a comment about that?
I am going to have a comment about it. We have a motion on the table. We are discussing it.
Right, and there's council members who are asking for some sort of comment about this from the majority who's willing to pass this forward, and it doesn't sound like there's any comments?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm sure of that.
All right, I think we're clear on your comment.
No, I have not gotten an answer.
You have had an answer from the others. I have some comments I'd like to make, but we need to get on with the motion.
So, I just-
We're having discussion.
The current, essentially, if we vote for that, we would be violating the Open Meeting Act, correct? Because it would, it states that the city council president and two council members would be the ones who would, could call a meeting and have a meeting, correct?
That is what this version says, yes.
And you are saying that we should have, or that the Open Meetings Act requires that we have four individuals to have quorum, correct?
It requires the president, the head of the council, the president in this case, or a majority of the council members may request a special meeting.
So, that will take presidents then because it's state law, and we always have to adhere to state law.
So, why would we add that on if they made all of these corrections, they redlined the document? Why did they decide to leave that very important component out?
Because state law trumps what is there.
That has nothing to do with state law. They purposely decided to leave that out. No? Because you've been working with them?
I've been very aware of the process, as have, I'm sure, you studying it.
I asked if you had been working with them because you're saying that state law preempts this, and so I'm, you know, I'm just curious.
It does in any case.
Well, what does Mr. Cutter have to say?
My opinion-
You are the city attorney, please.
That it would be far better to have a document here that was consistent with the law rather than create an instant conflict with the law that has to be waived.
However, state law does preempt it, and it would be, as it stated also in our policy and procedures.
So, we want to adopt-
Yes, we changed those.
-a policy that would be in violation, and we're aware of that.
The whole document is in violation of the Washington Voting Rights Act. So, I mean, we're just-
Absolutely.
-piecing this at this point because the nature of it is not in compliance with state law as it stands. So, I mean, just, you guys, just understand there's going to be litigation expenses and political consequences for this. But again, you guys want to do this without legal's input, and you want to do this at the behest of a few people, so.
I think we're ready for a roll call.
What do we vote, amendment or the resolution?
No.
No, this is the actual-
Original motion.
Amendments for-
We're voting on violating the voting rights of Latinos.
All right. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Yakima, Washington, providing for the submission to the voters of the city of Yakima at a special election to be held therein on February 11, 2020, of a proposition on whether Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, I'm sorry, I lost track on Roman numerals, of the charter of the city of Yakima should be amended to abandon and abolish the council manager form of government and adopt the mayor council form of government, making ancillary and corrective amendments throughout the charter to accommodate the change in the form of government, and requesting the Yakima County auditor call a special election.
We are ready for a roll call. Hill?
Yes.
Mendez?
This is like the three-headed snake. No.
White?
Yes.
Coffey?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Gutierrez?
For so, so many people who aren't here, no.
Funk?
No.
It passes four-three. All right, that will take us to other business. This will take us to other business.
These people don't know shame.
And do we have any, does anyone have any other business for the council?
Yeah, I have other business. Madam Mayor, I want there to be some information as soon as possible about bus routes that help children or passengers from East Yakima get out to the West Valley Aquatic Center. That was a promise and a pledge that was made many, many, many times over and over again, and I have not yet seen a-
I'm sorry, but please, let's wait. All right, that is enough. We do have a motion being, or a discussion in place. I would appreciate it if you'd give her the attention.
I have not seen modifications yet to the transit routes besides the Route 10 that was changed that used to go to Seela. So, at this point in time, those pledges have not been followed through with, and it is a city facility, and it is located, you know, a handful of miles away from the largest population of children, so.
Can I add to that? I think SOZO was also part, bus routes to SOZO were also part of that discussion, so we should add that to the discussion.
All right, thank you.
So, I'd like to move to add that subject to the next council business meeting.
Could I make an amendment to that and just add that we get a fee schedule? That's also something that we were going to discuss.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion for amendment to the original motion. The amendment is regarding a fee structure be included in it. Information on that. Information, would you like to speak to either one of you?
About the amendment, no.
No.
Is that a fee structure, is that a fee structure for the pool or for the bus route?
No, for the pool.
Yeah?
Yeah, for the pool.
Okay.
That's part of the conversation.
All right. All right, does everyone understand-
Yes.
-the motion?
Well, this is the-
Amendment.
The amendment.
I'd like to hear the whole thing repeated, if you don't mind, for-
The amendment was to bring back information on a fee schedule for the pool. The motion was to add that to the next meeting.
Add the transit routes to the West Valley Aquatic Center.
I just want to know how much so Y is.
And SOZO.
Okay, we've got sidebars here. Let's go ahead. You have clarified that, and if the clerk would read that, this is the amendment.
The amendment is to bring back a fee schedule regarding the aquatic center.
And?
And the motion is to add transit routes to West Valley, to bring back information on transit routes to the West Valley Aquatic Center and SOZO to the next meeting.
And all those in favor for the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, if you'll incorporate it into the motion.
Yes, bring back information on transit routes to West Valley Aquatic Center and SOZO, and also a fee schedule.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Do you have any other other business?
I just would like to make an announcement at some point. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
I was going to move to adjourn.
Okay, perfect. I'll quickly make my announcement. For those who are not able to make this meeting, I implore you, please organize, prepare for this meeting, this election that is coming. We cannot let them win.
Okay, your motion?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Mayor, there is one other point that I would like to just bring up for your consideration, and that is the meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning. My understanding is, and I was invited to the meeting, but there's a meeting called by the chamber, and certain people were invited and of the council and others, and there is at least an opportunity for there to be four council members there, which would raise a concern, and-
It's not tomorrow morning. It is tomorrow at 4:00 regarding the homeless situation.
As I said, I wasn't invited. I was just told there may be an issue.
So, are we going to have four people there?
So, what's your point?
I'll be there.
I will get the information from you, Brad, as I have another committee meeting.
Have you been invited?
I have been, yes.
You should have an invitation after the chamber.
Right, but I will not be attending because I have another meeting, so I'll get it from you.
Yeah.
It was from me.
The information from the meeting.
Yeah, we'll report back.
Okay.
So, I was the third council member that accepted the invitation, and then Kay, after I accepted the, after I was the third council member, Kay-
I wasn't invited, but I'm planning to attend.
I was just concerned that that makes a quorum, and it raises potential for similar issues that we've seen in the past. So, I would just ask that there be no conduct of business.
Yeah, that's not going to, that's not going to work. We're going there for a business meeting to discuss their concerns.
Yeah, you can't-
I mean, it's not like a council business meeting, but they want us to answer about city policy and what's going on. They issued us a letter saying how frustrated they are with the ever-growing homeless issue. We can't go there and just sit there and stare at each other and not say anything because there's four of us in a room.
No.
No, I won't be there.
So, we have our three.
The proper thing is for the invitees to show up, and people who were not invited to not show up.
No, Councilmember Funk is-
I disagree.
Should be able to be there for us.
Well, I think Councilmember White just said that he would not attend and allow Councilmember Funk to go, so it's fine.
We have a solution to that.
I might show up.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move-
So, you know.
I move the council adjourn to the city council regular meeting on December 3, 2019, beginning at 5:30 here in the Yakima City Council chambers.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.